Wasn't warm, I missed the snowstorm. Yeah. Yeah, my daughter's being situated, she's uh. You can see, they're very funny. She was here for the fall, but she's going to watch this. So I'm going to get situated and stuff, but yeah, so it was good. And you? Joyce here, yeah. But he's having a little trouble. It's fine. Thanks for going to the program for me.
Being a little geeky, but I would make your hair down, but. So you can see my speech.
Yeah. I know. I need like ten notes, say.
Well, it's six o'clock and I think we can get started. Lauren is going to do this remotely. She gets just some things in Denver and. Ross let me know he's going to be running a little bit late due to rehearsal with his. Group this evening, so I think we should dive right in. Start with.
Passing. Laird.
Yeah.
Monta Mayor.
Yeah.
Robinson.
Yeah.
Sparhawk.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Here. All right. As I said, Ross, joining us will be there. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which consists out of a historic preservation commission member appointment for Meredith Bullock. Renewal application for marijuana facility, Barbenale Green joint. Application for Masol, Biken Ski's liquor license. As well as renewal licenses for Alabria, the Center. Garfield County older adult programs, MOU. Which states what our contribution is for the traveler and. Meals programs in the county. A retail permit renewal application for Carbondale, says Carbondale Council on Arts and Humanities. These days. Uh, and a temporary sales room permit application for the storm cellar livery. As well as minutes from our meetings, June nineteenth, June twenty-fifth, July ninth, July sixteen, July twenty-third. And a city inspect building and planning software contract. So that is a whopper. Been a while since we've had minutes, but it looks like we're getting caught up on those. Any questions or items to pull for further discussion?
Uh, I don't really need to, but I think it would be great. Having twenty twenty-five, a word from. The older services in the county, just so we know. Uh, what's uh, what's happening, what's trending? It looks like we are serving more uh meals this year than we did. Come here. Just to. Need issues. What's happening with traveler seems rather. It's it's very useful, it's not, it's not a lot of money. Um, but I just wonder maybe discussions around. Downtown Marylandwood and stuff, public opportunities to. Uh, solidity services and make sure. Challenge for older folks in our community is getting to the meals. Getting to the meal site, so hopefully the downtowners with that. I know there's probably some people who need, I started off with announcing. Some, but maybe it's a schedule on time. It's twenty two. What's happening, what is adequate to the services people need? What, what role we can.
Thanks, I'll make it under that. Lauren did note that um, it, contributions increased pretty significantly. Each year, I like the way that they parcel it out by percentage of services used. Discuss whether a presentation was this time or not, so. But I'm adding it to our notes so that during the year, get that. Anything else?
Do you approve the consent agenda? One second.
Motion by Erica, second by Jen Sol, please say hi. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up is public comment. Got our new thirty minute. placeholder in here, might be a bit much, but we'll see. All right, Lonnie's here, see you. Introduce yourself. Introduce yourself.
Okay, so having seen a lot of related issues on. Agenda tonight, I thought it'd be good. Bye bye from the women that have had the solider. I'll tie your attention to the October thirty-first edition of the. Aspen Chimes, where there was a nice week after the last meeting. Uh, so this and for the public as well, again, that's on Thursday, October thirty-first edition of the um, Chimes. On the crystal river protections of our. And nicely by Heather Saffick. Um, I don't know if my continued participation with this project. On the Chams behalf may have been. Trust you or petition. Uh, so just in brief. I'll go over a couple of years ago, I was invited by the Wilderness Workshop. Uh, to be one of two recreation users. Procon, Edward, Pao, Obi being the other, um, to support public awareness. Of the first condition as well as natural attributes. Uh, so if you've attended the Wild River Stone Festival here at the Crystal Theater, you may have polish from the Crystal Clear, so that might bring about. Um, a few months later, right here in this room, Francie Jacober, uh, Biggin County Commissioner. Got some supporters came back to ask for a engagement. Of an upstream Bristol River Wild and Seiny designation. Which was agreed to and formalized by Mayor. Um, the ensuing year and a half consisted of monthly meetings and for public outreach and. Census building plus multiple workshops to educate steering committee. The process and merit making. Variables involved with security legislation. Period protections. Uh, and so the then trustee, the candidate steering committee member to again, Carbondale's interest. A lot would be initial preparation advocacy. I want to live in office this past spring. It seemed to make sense for me to continue since I already speak in the project. To be clear, Carbondale is not. Subject stretches upstream at the Biggin County. I part this on behalf of the town has been to. Watch for incident injury. Fail semi everyone. Am I being municipal industrial sea segregation designation? Either in or out of priority according to the conditions. As well as the local. Nothing else, Mark, um, but keeping an eye on. The adjacent upstream augmentation project and an article. Uh, in the actual wild scenic app suggesting that the entire lane could be encompassed. Which would possibly extend down to the outflow here, which is now subcommittees. Projects to seek clarity on. I drew the IGA subcommittee again. They become principals. Uh, but over four generals there would have shared. We have our rights, some jobs, some draft and select support person and that says. And with the CWCB as a key participant. And the state wildlife council, I sit on vote following under the Department of Natural Resources. I've become fairly well acquainted with the state legislative process, so that's where I've landed. Um, on paper, the premise is fairly straightforward. But this is still a wild west. With that, a handful of Carbondale's. Professionals are serving as expertise of. Um, technical advisors, many voting. Um, have it followed as well, so lots of eyes on. Um, bottom line, with the pace and complexity. Uh, of this initiative. Initiative, your board will likely have. Before Wild Seiny communities. For comparison, if you look at the twenty years, it took to get the tops of the vibe. Legislation passed, or just rolling to year three, on this one isn't much. Um, so with that, I'll probably just stop in every once in a while. Something memorable happens and say hello. So that's it for me, and. As we can't have an open dialogue from here tonight, if the board is interested in this or other. Natural water supply happening. You could always ask for twenty minute agenda, I don't, given enough notice, I can probably assemble. A small unit, local water professionals to help the discussion. Lastly, courtesy of the Wildlife Council and to thankfully lighten. I'll be leaving staff and camp this airbags out. Staff. They're pretty good for helmets boots, and in my case, waders or whatever. Ross got my. So please help yourself.
Thanks. Continue. It's kind of like, Heather Henry was on the Uber and then gotten. How's it going? She continued with that for a while. So to some point we get more representative on there who's on the board, but I think I. Great. Anybody else in the public who would like to address the board this evening? Can just approach the. podium here and just state your name clearly for the record, so our court can capture it. You have about three minutes and adjust your comments.
Awesome, thanks. My name is Derek Unchar. Nice to meet you. I live at um, on Lattigaloo. I just want to bring to the board the tension and application in front of the Garfield County DOCC. Uh, related to the Spring Creek Ranch. I don't know if it's been discussed at this meeting before or not. Um, I do know that the town's aware of it. The planner, I think. To Jared, exactly. Jared submitted a great letter to the DOCC as it relates to the application, but. For those that are not aware, Spring Creek Ranch is located just in the water plain below the Chiadetti property. And they have asked for an application to allow them to have an unlimited amount of events in their community event center each year. They're currently limited to thirty, which does seem fairly restrictive. Um, the ranch is about five hundred feet from my driveway, so. Um, when they have events, we can hear them pretty loud and clear. Uh, and they have not only asked for that. Change from thirty to unlimited events per year, but have also asked to change their capacity. From what's currently at two seventy-five, which is the capacity of their event center to a thousand person events. And the way that the Garfield County Land Use Code works is, is that if they were granted this change in use, they would have. Basically unrestricted ability to host these events. Uh, as many nights a year as they want with up to a thousand people at all their events if they chose. They kind of put the application in under the guise of. Um, the restrictions being too onerous on them to operate the business, which I totally understand. Um, but the application doesn't include anything as it relates to traffic management, um, or any of the other. Real impacts of having an event, that many events with that loud. Thing. I understand that this is Garfield County, so this board doesn't necessarily have to say in it, but I think. There's a role that this board should play. Uh, in weighing in with the county beyond the letter that. The town staff submitted, uh, and that meeting is next Monday, so I don't know if there's. An ability for the town to form a role in it. One of the things, I, I work in events, so I'm. Keenly aware of the impact that these events have, what's required for planning, especially when you get a pen event with a thousand people. Um, and as you may or may not know, that driveway comes right out at one and eighty street. And the traffic for a thousand person event that they clearly don't have parking for. Um, or don't have a plan for in their thing is, is a little bit frightening. And I think for the neighbors that are even closer to it, um, you know, they would have a broader impact. The application got hung up with the Garfield County DOCC and the technicality. Um, that they didn't actually get certified and be able to notify all the neighbors within two hundred feet. But even though I'm five hundred feet, we hear it loudly. Um, you know, it has a pretty big impact in town in general and obviously. So. Mostly just wanted to bring it to the board the tension that that was being asked for, but I do think it has a pretty big impact on. Potential for a big impact on the town and want to work with them on it, be good neighbors, but um, yeah, that was. And.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah.
So some. Uh, anybody else from the public? Who'd like to address the board tonight? Great, I'm moving on into trustee comments. Start. On its meetings, things you've been doing since the last meeting. You know, just comment that Jess did forward that um, notification to the rest of the board and. Um, I just got it into replying to it today. We get into town. And recommended that she check in with staff, so it's good to hear that staff has been engaged. We generally get referrals. Um, from the county and they generally respond to it at the staff level. It's rare that, you know, we'll get involved. County application, but trustees would certainly be. You know. Free to. Present yourself at the, at the meeting and um, speak just as a resident of Carbondale, but I anticipate that Monday is something. And dive into and take a stand. Um, yeah, other comments?
Just add to that. The only other thought I had was, and just so you know, Derek, we wouldn't be able to take action tonight, so um. Is if we wanted to invite the G N E Ds to come and present to us. Neighbors a chance to hear, I know you guys can all code with the DOCC too, just doesn't. They're, you know, part of our community, just like all the folks who live over there, so. If we want to follow up. Their plans. But it can, stuff like that, we do that.
Yeah, maybe see where it's just. Trust, so.
Yeah, no, I, I knew John could do that. I think one thing this board could look to do with the county long term is, I was surprised to learn the Garfield County has new special event. Permit in the Leaning's Code as part of their overall thing, and so it's a bit surprising that the county that size with these much children on it. Special. Um, applications and then idea. Picking County, um, and I know the town does have ready. These sessions if. The county, and so as the. Commercial activity in the county has grown and it's tangentially connected to what goes on here in town. That is something that I do think that this group could take to the county and look at long term to adjust. Because if that were in place, then they could apply, if they want to have one big concert a year with a thousand people, then there would be a process for them to take an apply. Special permit, which doesn't exist today.
Okay, any other trustee comments?
Yeah, of course. Um. This first Friday is going to be a big one. There is um, all kinds of stuff happening downtown. There's going to be, I'll put up the K D and K hat, Labor of Love Auction at the Thunder River Theater. The other end of the street will be the Cup Auction down at the Marple Facility. Um, Santa will be here. A Christmas tree, I believe, getting lighted. I believe there's music happening. Somewhere.
There.
Mr. Stevens. Yeah, Mr. Stevens. Yeah. Yeah. Um, so definitely make that your destination on Friday. Support those, follows various organizations. Um. I will also say, I, we did have a bike bed trails mission meeting. Last night, which was a little bit more of a chance for them. Having digested the previous presentation, get their. Feedback. Um, and I think it was pretty good. They have developed a pretty like. Lengthy and detailed set of action items. There's sort of a strategy section in plan, I'm sure that has had a chance to review it closely, but. Um, there's sort of a strategy section and then there's. A whole toolbox of items that are sort of treatments to roads and there's. I think they narrowed it on kind of the overarching. Goals as being good, but too broad and wanting. Specific actions listed in that realm around sacred schools. And maybe some other planning things, so. They made this document and I think. Kevin, the consultant, can use some of the discussion during that. Meeting to try to then work with. To. Clean it up a little bit and, and try to make it. Something the consultant can digest on. But uh, hopefully they'll be able to add some of those sub. Subaction items to the objectives area, I guess. And then. We'll see. I don't know if they're going to be hundred percent satisfied with it even at that point, but um. We'll have to see how it turns out. Um, and they, there was also a presentation. About complete streets, uh, which is a policy that AARP has put forward. Um, Nikki, and she again made the presentation in this case. And there was some discussion of whether to pair. An adoption of some type of resolution, I guess. Big streets with. So. I guess we'll see where that would come to that, but I think that. Bike pedal will be that more at the next meeting. And um. Yeah. Let's see what else. The, on the Crystal River thing that Lonnie brought up, maybe, I don't know if we're, how big we want to explode that water rights discussion in. January, maybe we should. And then one last comment, just um, on our, for our previous discussion, the last meeting about art space. Um, I sort of was knocking about my head and then. Start, starting, sort of feeling like maybe we should. I don't know. I guess it's a question of like what to make the architects work on, and I was sort of feeling like. In retrospect, maybe I feel like they should. Do a design exercise on everything east of the. Promenade. Um, because they've already done design south, instead of modifying that. To try to connect it across the promenade, if you could. Develop a thing that allows us to develop that pocket. All at once with a building that maybe has a breezeway connecting it to the east side or something like that. I think it's. Worth, I don't know, throwing that out there for them to consider. And that's about it. I think, I think also um, on the subject of. Uh, which we'll get to on the subject of pool, you know, we've lost a lot of trees as well. And I guess I would love to have the arborists take a look at those ponderous trees. As soon as possible and see if we can move them. And if not. Is there some thought about rethinking that design there? They're not in the greatest location, but I do feel like they are. The one natural feature of that state that exists. Um, of the whole rest of this. Raw, raw land, um, and I think that's about it.
Uh, it's, uh, just wanted to give her video update on the. Good deeds program, uh, we have now closed on five units. Um, three in Glenwood, two are in Carbondale. And the two in Carbondale, uh, one couple, uh, one works, uh, for a local nonprofit, one works for the. And the other couple are both servers and uh, one of them's also a bike mechanic and ski patrol. So um, real nice success in a short period of time. We now have five de-restricted. Single family homes in Carbondale and one with friends. Um. So we talked about um. Our protocols for bringing things, bringing, putting things on the agenda. And after the meeting on the twelfth, where. Um, public works gave us timeframes for the crossings and the roundabout. Jess and I ended up being on a meeting with some C D O people through age friendly of Irvingdale. And uh, we started thinking, and I'll send you this memo. That it'd be really useful to have a work session. On thirty-three early, next year. With C D O people. So that we can fully understand what the process is for getting approval for the things we're considering. And the timeframe and the milestones, so that if we have an opportunity to expedite some of this, we can. I feel like we're, we're really kind of foundering a little bit, but. And um, given the intense interest in especially the crossing. Uh, would love to know how junior that. And then, and if not, great, but at least we can say, hey, we tried. And we can invite some to the event, so I'm going to send a. A memo, Justin and I, to everybody. And then you. Soon you'll be there, but I mean, you're C D O. So, yeah, that would be a challenge, but yeah. A piece of paper in the middle and walk around it, get drawn it. Just to really try and focus projects. So. Uh, it's. Great. Expect that this evening. Until we turn meeting.
Yeah, that's great, and I think we're planning on moving in that direction and I think the, the structure of your memo and. C D O involvement is great, and um, last time I spoke with Kevin about it, um, we're trying to narrow it down from. You know, a huge planning process to something more than let's just start the whole piece, and there's something between. And that work session is probably really going to get kicked off. Um, we talked about at least some sort of schematic, some sort of design where we can look at and say. If you put this roundabout here and this crossing here, here's how it would act traffic circulation connectivity. So that we can sort of. Yeah, we can. Uh, Eric, anything? Justin, anything?
Yeah, I attended the Sheraton Council meeting, mostly about budget. They always have. Friday. The walls at Much Cas, New Year's, small business artists shopping at. Stuff there for Christmas holidays. Um, I think. The Spring Grease Ranch. Conversation just brings up sort of what he was talking about, that. There isn't a real process at the V O C C level for special events or um. I don't know, unlimited events. Is a red flag to me, and I live on Lattigaloo too, and I'm not as close as Derek is, but. Close enough to hear it and would be impact impacted, and there's a lot of people. Be impacted. So. We try to tune into that. To get some more information and see what their next steps. I just wanted to bring up the Hendricks and Main Intersection, our city market. Where the Transformers are. I know that if we have the option to put in a four-way stop there at. Any point is what it sounds like. I think it would be. Beneficial to get, put that in soon. At four thirty today, I was sitting at that, that stop sign. On Hendricks, trying to get across and, or across Main. And there was like ten bars. So when it's really busy, it's, it's hard to get through that intersection, it's just going to get busier, so. Um, I'd be open to looking at whether or not that can happen. Soon, it seems like a really simple way to address the traffic issues right there. That's it.
Great, thank you. Christina?
No, I'm saying.
And that, you know, it's generally a staff level thing, so it's sort of like we diverted Kevin on when and where the stop signs, but I think we can get it up. Okay, um, hi, Ross. Okay, um, hi Ross. You're just in time if you have any comments, Bruce. Attorney's comments. Welcome back, Mark. We haven't seen you in a while. Any comments?
Probably obvious to all you, it's trying to staff the meetings from an attorney standpoint, based on who's been working on the items that are applying to the end of. So on the basis until now, actually things should have been worked. Keep doing that going forward. That's okay. Um, but tonight I had helped Lauren with the S T R ordinance. So here I am, first thing I'm really going into. That's been on your agenda. Um, so hello. And then uh, the other thing is Chris mentioned the water. Uh, issues, Lauren has passed along. Of score on water update.
Anything anybody wants to add to that um, water discussion, Mike? So that you wanna get up to it. I'm sure that what Mark's working on is aligned with questions that we have. I mean, so I mean, what's the guidance you've got so far?
It was fairly general. Basically, we discussed with Lauren. Erica, you were with Scott by virtue. Jim Scott's office, which has been the town's hydrology consultants for twenty five-ish years. Um, Scott has since retired individually, but his firm is still. Um, they do some great mapping, great sort of. Orienting to where the raw water sources are, where the treatment is, where the dishes are. Um, which sort of facilitates discussion. I've been in touch with Ashley Moffett, somebody. She's kind of taken over Scott's role and with Lauren's support, I've suggested that Ashley come in and be a part of this. And we approach it like we did before, because I guess I'd put on there as your thought, none of you. Going back, I think we even updated those materials, but in my view, it's a real nice orientation. For those of you who don't do all this stuff every day. And it may lead to more questions or or wanting to have other groups like people. Follow up. I think we can probably fill as much time as we can.
It's sort of an overview. What water rights we have on paper and ability.
Well, in some general discuss, I don't mean, some general discussion about the waterway system.
Yeah.
History flows, what it means to cause. And you know, what happens when there's water shortage, just kind of getting stuff oriented before you get policies.
And I think the biggest question that comes up in drought years every time. Why is the, why doesn't the town need more water in the river? So just kind of be ready to address that. And that's likely the key thing. Ditch flowing through town and river dries out for that stretch and it looks to to people like, well, we could just. Withdraw less than ditch and there'd be more water for the fish. Just the reality around that and whether how much impact. So I think it's just a good framework first. Um, anything else anybody wants to, and you can always just email Mark later as well, but I just want to make sure that.
But I would, I would suggest it's up to you, not not me, but Lauren agrees. I think that it'd be fairly. Orient, you know, orienting, setting the stage for the future policy making rather than trying to come to you with. Alls, you know, our answers to policy questions you.
Rich, sounds good. Thanks, Mark. Uh, I don't think we have any managers comments, so.
I'm here.
There's Lauren.
I'm here.
Car.
No, I'm in a hotel room. The lighting is really bad, so sorry about that. Um.
We can not hear you.
She's not muted. I'm not muted. Is that better? Can you hear me now? Okay.
Arden, it appears you're a panelist and you're unmuted, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I tested my microphone too.
Well, I have her update, so I can. Provide it. While she figures that out. At one of the previous board meetings, you guys had asked how much was in the tree replacement budget. That number is thirteen thousand dollars. It was budgeted for twenty twenty five to replace trees. Um, our newsletter is up to four hundred and fifty subscribers. As of yesterday. Um, so just those are some updates that she, I think that was it.
Hey, the first time is going to throw an hour into action items. So we have four action items. All you, join us please. Thank you for being here.
Good evening.
Good evening. But Mike's on. Accessible to you. Red is good.
Red is good.
Yeah, that's me then. Alright.
Um, so yeah, I just wanted to come back, see you all. I mentioned so much. Um, really just. We're still working on this. This is a big endeavor. Uh, it's been a long time since code were updated. And we are taking a little bit different approach than has been done in the past as well. To. Develop some other opportunities within the code to help mitigate potential uh. Spenses while we're trying to also increase energy efficiency. Uh, the additional affordable housing requirements that come into play and trying to find a balance. With some of that and the building codes. And so we, we, there's some unique stuff you'll see pretty soon. Um, but there was really these two that I sent out the other day with this. Largely, these were getting really close to completion and. I would, there's a couple of things I would like to at least get some feedback and thoughts from the board on, uh, which will help me as I continue on. The, you know, I gave a summary of how these fees would compare to other nearby jurisdictions and. I had spent quite a bit of time trying to find that balance and I think I did a pretty good job really for a fee schedule that hasn't been updated in. Little over ten years, I believe. Um, we're also looking at moving this to schedule A. So that that would allow us to revisit the fee schedules annually as need be. Um, this, this schedule would become an adoption. I think Mark and I had talked about this the other day that. When we adopt the building code, this would be. An amendment to our schedule A, because that's when this could become an official document. There's a few things still that are. Need to be worked out. One of which is in the list of on page one of this, the other inspection and fees. I, this one, it's number two, is a green building fee. This is really just placed there as a placeholder at the moment so that we could have a discussion. Going back through the. History of the board's meetings with uh, Clear and Core and. With Jeff Dickinson and how the R E B P was originally developed. There, and we're trying to move away from that, but uh. Not entirely, I guess. The. Discussion or the topic about carrots has come up more than once. Um, so that's what this fee is kind of sitting in here for. The uh, we have. Who's that one? We have a fee. Where our R E B Ps stuff goes, and that's the renewable and efficiency fund. But the provisions of that fund, I don't think we could utilize that. As carrots for these programs. So I do have to look for. The way that we would develop something like that. Um, so that's one of the items I'd really like to get some thoughts on. Where we think that, you know, because obviously it's a, an issue. We're raising permit fees already and. How do we? Help the community. I have, besides this fee, I have some other ideas. Um. That we should probably get into, but probably when I have a little better development into that category. But uh. That's really the item on the fee schedule. And then. As far as the general regulations, Article One. This too is, I feel like pretty close. There's a lot of redundancies when you go through our building codes as currently adopted. So I went through them and pulled a lot of that stuff and moved it to Article One. Just so we would not have that repetitive redundancy on each code that we adopt. And I added some other. There are other items obviously than that, like. The development of. General standards for construction sites. I think there's some really good things that have been added here. And some clarity on permit expirations. And.
Hey, Aaron, can you say where you are? I'm kind of lost or. Uh, where are you in the memo that you're looking at?
Uh, so I'm looking over the Article One general regulations. You should.
We have the uh, memo.
Yeah, I had three attachments. I know that day that I uploaded them. I was on my way out of town for Thanksgiving holiday.
The third. Item is nothing. It's it's a blank memo.
That would be a problem, wouldn't it? Yes.
I was scrolling through and I was like.
Added it to my items and I don't know what happened after that. I was already traveling when I was making that. Last minute update on there.
Okay, yeah, that one didn't come through.
Okay, well, let's get back to that one. Um, I think you'll, we'll get that out to you guys and uh. We'll pick that one up a little later for that part. I don't think there's much that I needed feedback really from here other than. Uh, am I on the right track or not?
It seems like your, your main question is about fees.
It really, but you know. Thoughts on the entire fee schedule here? When you look at our current building codes. The fee schedules are scattered throughout. Each code adopt as adopted. So the building code has a schedule, the residential building code has a schedule, the mechanical code has a schedule. Plumbing, the R E B P, and we're just trying to move everything to one easily. Identified location. And have it up in front. And it's kind of the same idea when you get to the general regulations, when you get to see them is to. This is the information we're trying to put right up front and uh, that applies to all permits, so. Uh. That's really what I'm after at the moment and we. Are doing a lot of other parts to get those other codes finished up and ready to. Get out in front of the public and then to the board and get them adopted.
Okay, thanks. And I see the, the comparisons on page seven of the.
Yeah, so I think I did a. A comparison to.
Oh, I see.
My current table of fees versus my proposed table of fees and we're looking at about fourteen percent increase. That is a straight comparison to the fee table itself. There are fees within this entire document that some are higher. Some are lower, uh. Really just kind of took the thought process there of how much time do we spend on some of these items and others even. Didn't really matter, uh, time wise, trying to keep some things like fence permits as affordable as possible. Um, we are looking at some changes on how we would handle them, but. Uh, so there's certain permits that we, we're definitely not covering the, our cost of the department, but trying to. Make sure that it's. A benefit to come and get the permit, so. That's really the idea behind that.
Okay, well, let's pause there on fees for a moment. Um, a lot of very detailed information, but um, any questions or feedback on those proposals?
I don't have um, specific feedback on any item, uh, other than I was gonna ask that we like for the. Kind of smaller items or homeowner items that we just make sure we're making it reasonable so folks do come in. And they're kind of, that's almost their carrot.
Yes.
To come get a permit.
Yep.
Um, and then I, I'm not quite understanding, um, the. I guess I'm trying to, I want to clarify what you mean by the fifteen percent of the building permit fee for that green building fee. Is that? To raise money to create carrots?
I imagine we're gonna see when we get to the end of this. I still have uh, consultants working on some of the. What would the, what would qualify for such carrots, but whether it's a refund of certain amount of permit fees or. Um, there would be some type of financial. Uh, benefit to going above and beyond. I had a meeting with a contractor today and we were discussing. Meeting the requirements that we would establish and then what happens when you go beyond that and uh. So that's what we're looking to. Create an opportunity for and uh.
Okay.
There's like within the fees, there's that exterior energy use. Which is item seventeen and then additional fees under item eighteen. These fees would still go to the renewable and efficiency fund as established, so. That, that has its own intent, so we would be creating another. Program and an account for that use in specific for that.
But that would be, it would, it would be a like fif, potentially like, what's your name, like a fifteen percent reduction in your total building permit.
Yeah, there's a. Yeah, exactly.
Measures.
Yeah, okay, that's, yeah, just maybe add the word reduction, because I. Yeah, I mean, it's, and again, that was really kind of, it's just been placed there, because I had nowhere else to go, but at least to hold it and. Put it in for. Doing something with it.
Yeah.
Where was that?
Uh, so on page one of the fee schedule, under other inspections and fees, number two says green building fee. Fifteen percent of the building permit fee. So we're just clarifying that'd be a fifteen percent reduction.
Well, no, it would be, wouldn't it be fifty percent on top that then you can reduce back to zero if people go above and beyond.
Correct. That, that is correct. There would be a fee and and that's what we're still working. This actually came from uh. Telluride implemented a fee similar to this and. I did contact them and ask them how they were utilizing that and they said, you don't really know. Okay, well, I don't want to go there. I will actually be developed. If we do something like this, it would be very clear. What its intent is and how it would be utilized. I think we would create. Not within the code itself, but like the rebate programs or whatever we develop would be something that could be evaluated annually and. Maybe something that we had done in the past is no longer on the list. Maybe we've changed and added a new item to the list. I think it gives us that opportunity to. Work within the progress of. Development.
Okay. Other clarifying questions or feedback, Ross?
Ju- just to clarify, so basically, so. I, I just want to make sure that I understood you. So basically, we are taking a, taking a carrot for fifteen percent. Asking for them for a fifteen percent and then the carrot is how much we kind of give back. We're at, we're tacking on fifteen percent.
What, what I see most likely is the result of this is. That there will be many jobs that are going to only plan to meet the minimum requirements.
Okay.
The, these type of fees would be there to help fund those that. Go above and beyond and are taking that initiative to do those extra steps. That's, I don't know that it would be like a fifteen percent rebate back to them. It may be a. A number that's larger. That's where we still have to work with all of the finer details there.
Okay.
It's really more of a.
That makes sense.
Does the board support an idea like generating. Fees or a fund that can actually help to offset that. Additional costs.
Yeah, let's stay with that topic for a moment then. It seems like a pretty.
Sorry, I mentioned a, a REM fund.
So we have a fund, which is the renewable and efficiency fund. But the language that that, what we can utilize that fund for. I don't believe that we would actually be able to utilize it for a program like this.
What can we use it for?
It has some pretty, I'd have to grab my phone. If you give me a minute, I'll grab it. And I, I guess.
It's about uh, eighty two thousand dollars right now and it can be used for, um, it's a, it is pretty broad. It can be used for efficiency. Or renewable projects. Um, it's kind, it's wide open right now. Like it's, it doesn't say just for, I don't think it says just for town. We can look, it's in our.
But you can't utilize it for anything that's already required by what we do. That's.
Yeah, and we could use it for our own projects, um, like the solar on the pool or the um. Geothermal project at the third street, you know, like we could decide to put that money towards energy efficiency or even. The electrification of this building. I think it's kind of broad enough, or it could potentially be rebates for, yeah, above and beyond code. Would be my. On that one, we would just want to clarify, but I don't have it in front of me.
Just to clear, uh, clarify, I mean, it seems like. There's been a lot of suggestions about how do we create a fund that helps people make these changes. We're already jumping to twenty twenty one, so everybody's going to have to jump to a higher bar. Um, so I'm just wondering about the. The value of then adding a fee on top of that. And could we change the thinking and so you have to hit code, it's twenty twenty one. If you want to go above and beyond that, maybe we reduce fees for everything. To incentivize them to do it because it's going to be more expensive generally. And ru- really rethink the way we do. I know we want to cover our costs, but we also want people to build. The most efficient buildings they can. Um, and knowing that we probably don't have a lot of money, but if we could. Work on the fees and not just have, it almost seems punitive right now and how could we make it much more of an incentive? Like, oh, if you wanted to do that, we could drop this. As opposed to it's a fee that we then we fund and I'd really love to explore the REM program. I mean, Aspen's had it for years and it's generated a lot of money. I know it's a different reality. Uh, people do the right thing here. Instead of trying to get around it, but maybe we need to, just like they have, look at what we're trying to do with that and see. Is, is that where we could get some resources that could then go into help people do more than what we're asking them to do? Um, I'm just really uncomfortable with um, a green fee. It's like, whoa, what do we, we want them to do it. We don't want to penalize them. So just some thought thinking, more thinking with the consultants about how we might structure that, I think would be really useful.
Other thoughts on this particular topic? Seems like a really important one to give clear feedback on.
So this would, so this would have a, you know, the, we have a fee, fee structure right now, which we're proposing with a lot of. Variation within it is a fourteen percent increase for next year and then the, this thing is sort of a floating thing out beyond that. Which if we were aggressive and did both of them, we would be looking at that on top of what we already are doing.
Yeah, and this is to be clear on how we calculate fees, like if it was a standard building permit, we have. We calculate the building permit fee and then the plan review fees are based on a percentage sixty five percent typically is what's done. Of the permit fee. We would not be taking that combined. Permit fee of plan, plan review and permit fee. This would be just another calculation that. Similar to the sixty five percent plan review. So it would be only calculated off of the initial permit fee numbers, just to. Be clear how that would come about.
What I'm understanding is that there's a fourteen percent increase in the building permit fee. But it's not going to be a thirty percent increase because the fifteen percent increase, the fifteen percent doesn't get calculated on the building's value. It gets. It would be fifteen percent of the permit fee.
That's correct.
Okay.
So it's not a thirty percent jump.
That's correct.
It's a fourteen percent plus.
That would be thirty, fifteen percent of fourteen percent or?
Yeah, yes.
And I really didn't go into the numbers there because again, I really felt like getting this information first is. I spent a lot of my free time already on here and if I can limit how much I spend going in the direction that we're gonna. Turn and go somewhere else. That's all I'm trying to avoid.
Yeah, no, that's good. Well, other thoughts on sort of Colin's suggestion is where my head was going as well. Um. I, I'm not real comfortable with the idea that we increase fees by fourteen percent and then we add another fifteen percent and then say we can take that away. Like in my mind. Yeah, getting to the twenty twenty one code is a huge accomplishment and I want to make that. Not feel punitive to people if that's all that they do. I mean, if that's all that they, like, I don't think we always have to be stretching beyond. What we're requiring that far because if we're going to be requiring the twenty twenty one code, it's, it's quite aggressive and progressive and very, very efficient. And very expensive to, to meet. So I'm not super interested in incentives and carrots to go beyond that. I think incentives and carrots are really important. If you've got a really basic level code. And you're looking for innovation, but if we're forcing everybody to go as far as the twenty twenty one.
Well, so part of this development that goes beyond code is based on, this is from the energy consultants. And is really based on prior boards. Uh, expressions to look at the net zero provisions for both new construction and existing buildings. And that's where the. Carrots discussions have come from and so that's, you know, not only implementing. To try and stay on track with that path that's been expressed previously, but then how to mitigate from there. So.
Okay, Jesse.
I haven't seen the code amendments or any of that, but it sounds like we're going to twenty twenty one energy code. But there also could be amendments that make that even harder. Based on our goal of this net zero. So I just want to clarify that we're not just asking for twenty twenty one energy code. We are asking for twenty twenty one energy code plus, plus. And we won't know those plus pluses until we see the amendments to the code and see what Carbondale is asking for because it's different. Then it's different to go to, to just adopt a code. And it, from what I gather from the memo is that we're also looking at making that twenty twenty one energy code even harder. Based on what other previous boards have asked these consultants to do. So. I don't know when you want to move on from the fees, but.
Well, I think.
I have many things that I, I have many.
Go there. I just want to at least give this feedback. I want to be clear because Aaron wants to go away with like. Is he striking a line through number two there of the fifteen percent? Well, and what we have talked about in the past was like. If net zero is still six years out, you know, down the road for our code adoption, then we'd say, well, if you go all the way there. Then there could be some reduction in fees. Oh, it sounds like we, I don't want to speak for the board. I want to be clear. Are we saying what Colin said and I'm agreeing with? We don't want to add a fee and then take the fee away. It should be, here's the base fees. And then there might be a incentive to go far beyond that, but people wouldn't feel obligated to do that to get to a reasonable fee structure.
I agree, but we, I, I do not want to add a fee. I don't want to add a green building fee. That feels punitive to me as well. I think that it should just be, these are the building permit fees. And then we have some very simple way to reduce the fee if you go above and beyond. The whole point of taking away this residential energy building checklist. Thing that we have right now is that it's very complicated. And so we're trying to take that away. So I want to be careful about what we're saying. When we say, if you go above and beyond and hit these marks, we'll reduce your fees. I want to be really clear that that above and beyond benchmark should be really simple to manage as staff.
Yeah, well, the only thing I would add is if, if it, if in order to cover those, those additional staffing hours to do that. We need to just raise all of the, the rates by another percentage point because fifteen percent of fifteen percent is a couple of percentage points. If we, if we need to do that somewhere in there, if there's a happy medium that, that gives a little bit of a breathing room. Um, and then also all, it gives a little more breathing room on some of those things as well as offers the possibility of giving a rebate. Or a, or, or, or reduction in fees for, for going above and beyond. I don't want to lose sight of, of. Of Carbondale being a place where we reward people for being aspirational and being a little bit ahead of the curve. Um, I think that that's part of our ethos and I think we ought to uh, embrace that. Um. It doesn't, doesn't have to be everybody's ethos, but I think we want to be a place where someone is, is valued for trying to do that. Um, and, and setting some examples in maybe even failing occasionally, but given, giving a good try. Um, and so I, I, I'm not. I don't want to necessarily just say, hey, we got everybody to twenty twenty one and that's, we should feel, we should feel just fine about that. I think we. I think there needs to be space for someone to, to be rewarded and appreciated for doing more.
So what I'm hearing then is pretty broad agreement on. Some incentive, but it's a reduction in your overall fee. For going above and beyond and it's simple and it's clear. And I mean, I think we had talked about things like if you get to whatever our definition of net zero is. That hits the target. There's probably not a lot of steps in between, you know, if it's all electric and it has a certain amount of renewables on site or whatever our definition in that zero is at this point. That's what we had talked about a couple of years ago as the incentive would be there for that. But we're not comfortable adding a fee and then taking it away. Does that help?
I got that.
Okay, let's, let's keep going. Um, Jess, you had some other things you wanted to dive into? Chris?
I guess I just was, I don't know if I don't want, I don't know if I have to drag this out, but I guess I was just curious. What is the budgetary standing of the department? Because it's not like an enterprise fund where you're forced to. Break even, like how much are we, we're already subsidizing this just to quite, to quite a degree.
I would agree because that's partly the delay in code adoptions in the past to. Update the tables and fees previously. So we, we're definitely behind the curve at the moment. And that was where I took this to kind of what I felt like was a good balance of, I mean, we're making this jump. But this get, and then moving it where we're moving it to the Schedule A, which would let, you know, next year we found out that. Yeah, we still need to revisit this. It gave us the easier opportunity instead of going back to amend an ordinance of a code.
Okay, well, I just would say I'd support, I think I support where you landed generally with that part of it. And I think. We should have a continuing discussion about incentives for specific, I think maybe for specific items. Yeah.
And I can tell you, my, the biggest challenge for me, uh, the code adoption has not been the problem. It was when I was handed the. Oh, and by the way, we're going to also be looking at all the net zero provisions to meet the prior goals. That has been very challenging for me as well to swallow.
It, it also seems like we have an opportunity, I think at the last meeting we're clear was here. We talked about the net zero goal, what's that mean? And we might have an opportunity to dig down a little deeper to see if we can.
I guess I saw there's an upcoming discussion on this topic.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I mean, do you need more feedback on that? Like, I think the roadmap to net zero has always been a fairly. Vague thing for all of us because it's like, how are we going to get there to the point where every building doesn't add to our carbon footprint? That's been the goal of that. And it seems like each of these steps is, is helping us get there and we don't want it to be too convoluted and onerous. Like we've been also going toward consistency and simplicity here.
So my feelings on, there's two paths that we're dealing with. We have the path for new construction. And we have the path for existing buildings. I have less. Pain from looking at a new building because it's much simpler. In the current, where we're at right now in the process of developing some standards for even existing buildings is pretty minimal. And I can, I can definitely feel like I'm supportive of where we're at, at the moment, and I just haven't got it all put together for this. But it's that longer, as we keep going and keep ratcheting it up, that's where I, I think we're going to. There's some things that need to be dealt with and the direction from the board would be highly desired at that point.
It seems like a goal for now is to get us up to these twenty twenty one codes. And maybe we pause there and we look at that regional net zero roadmap and we try to be consistent so that whatever is going on in the valley, we're kind of. Taking these steps together.
Right, there's a, I mean, there's obviously like Picken County and, and some of the Upper Valley Basalt as well. They, they still maintain. A above code program, so it's not that we're off base. And there's just. My feelings and especially in the existing buildings is. That's a much more expensive endeavor than I think it's ever really counted on. And the people that are going to feel that burden are the ones that probably can afford it the least. It's almost easier to build a new home than to retrofit sometimes. And I think there's. Some, I think we're, where we're starting right now is good because we're really looking at. Documenting where this existing stuff is so we can, that is a good start. And I, that's where my ideas of like, I think the building department should be. More involved with those tests and audits than having a third party that they spend more money. To get those tests and audits done where they could actually, if the, if our department can provide some of that service, they can really use. That money that they would have paid a third independent party to actually make energy improvements. And for example, two blower doors is going to run somewhere seven hundred, eight hundred dollars to do the two tests. One to find out what your leakage is to begin with, the second to show what improvements you've made. And that's eight hundred dollars that we could put into the improvements. And so that, that's really where I would like to see our department be able to. Add to that and, and provide some of that service. That's not to say that we don't have third party services involved with lots of other things. But more on the existing buildings that are going to fall under these provisions.
Okay, um, what else do we want to dive into here? Jesse had other?
I have.
Oh, and then Lauren has her hand raised.
A few. Um, general comments with the memo. I went back and looked at, so. When I'm looking at building codes, generally. When I look at ours, I think about the building departments in the valley that are easy to work with. Simple, straightforward, reasonable. Um, and so I have some concerns about. How many codes we're trying to adopt. Um, we're bringing in fully new codes that. We have not ever adopted before that other municipalities in the valley are not adopting. Um, so it seems like we're complicating things more than we should. Um, like the twenty twenty one property maintenance code, uh, the twenty twenty one swimming pool and spa code. Those seem like. We just, it, it just seems like more that we're adding to the building department's plate. Um, I think that. And the town of Carbondale is all about, we, we talk all the time about making things simple for staff and I think. If we wanted to make this simple for staff, the twenty twenty one energy code and the green building co- code are. Very, very. Conservative, like it, it's going to cost someone a lot of money to hit those marks. And so. Then asking them to also add these other things where Aaron's spending time. Going through every code, making sure that it is hitting these net zero, net zero requirements that we talk about. Like it seems like, why would we, why would we go that far? Why don't we just? Right now we have the I G C C, the I E C C, the I R C, the I B C, the I M C, the I P C and the I F G C. Those are all the codes that we have right now. They're not up to date, but those are the codes that we have right now. Why wouldn't we just update those? And keep it really simple, go to the twenty twenty one and, and stop. And reevaluate where this board wants to go with this path to net zero.
I think that's a good question. A couple of points there are pretty valid other than like the conflicts that I deal with, with the mix of codes. The O nine codes and the fifteen and the eighteen codes that I deal with on a daily basis. There are regular conflicts that I have to sort out.
Which is why I think all of them should be twenty twenty one.
Right, so like the, really the few that we're adding are the property maintenance code. The existing building code and the pool and spa code. Those are really the three items that are additions. Two of those, the property maintenance code and the existing building code become very important to some of the changes. That we're working on to like the I B C to develop additional housing opportunities. So. Where the code has what are called live work. Units in the building code, we, which have a predominant residential function. With a small commercial function associated with it. We are working to develop what we would call a work-live function as well. So now we're having a more commercial function. With a residential element as well on the reduced side of that. So there's some. Trying to deal with some things from the planning side as well to help work through some of this. We have some commercial spaces that are looking for. Opportunities to utilize their space as residential function. But we run into other land use items like parking requirements for those residential designations. So we're trying to find these other opportunities that we can place them still in a commercial designation and. Maintain the idea of what that space always was and yet also create additional housing in that space. At the same time, and then some of those regulations that are in the building, in the existing building and property maintenance. Get referred to from those changes that we're making to allow that to happen. Um, that's really where my challenge on that is. The pool and spa, there's not one here, but we actually had to. Utilize the twenty one code along with provisions from the twenty four code to deal with our own project. So we, I know there's other pool projects kind of in the works. we, I know there's other pool projects kind of in the works around here. I need to have a standard to review that by. There's nothing in the codes that addresses that. So that, that's really what that document's for.
How do other municipalities deal with those things?
People, Snowmass doesn't have, Snowmass didn't adopt the pool and spa code and they built a pool. So, and they have lots of hotels with pools. So I don't fully buy that that's required to, to have pools and spas in town. I also want to clarify that I am fine with the 2021 existing building code. Because I think that that's one of the hard things about the renovations that happen in this town is that you don't have the existing building code to fall back on when it's the existing building. So I, I mean, I run into that all the time. So I, I hundred percent am on board with IABC. Snowmass has the IABC, it should be in there. But the property maintenance code and the swimming pool and spa code, I just, I think that there's ways to rely on that code and not fully adopt it as a town code. And I think, I think, I just think it's simpler to have like, let's just adopt the ones that we already have on our books plus IABC, because that makes our life easier in the field and for staff and then, and then and go from there. Like, let's just get to where we need to be to not be on 2009 with 2018 energy codes. And green, green construction codes. That's just my personal opinion.
Yeah. And I don't know that the rest of us might, my, I can speak for myself. I don't know whether it's easier to, like, we're going for simplicity and consistency and all that. And I don't know if it's simpler to do what Jess is suggesting and she sees it from the, um, contractor side, or whether it's simpler to do what you're suggesting here and, and you see it from the approver, um, side. I, I can, I can see the logic in both kind of arguments.
Well, fortunately.
Lost our zoom up there, guys. Oh, there it came back.
I've been on the contractor's side too. So everything that I'm dealing with here, I am really trying to balance that as well. Cause I understand how much this affects both the contractor, the owner as well as our department. So.
So I don't know that we're going to give real clear direction on either, you know.
But this, this kind of a candid discussion is just in its own useful for me too, to kind of continue to work on this. So.
Okay.
So I, I just have one more quick question. Um, when you say that you're amending the code to fit Carbondale. Is there a way for us to not do that? To be simple and just adopt the code for now?
So a part of what has driven that, obviously, like I was explaining was we've had some situations within some existing commercial spaces that are causing discussions to occur within our departments that we're just trying to find ways to resolve without having to come, you know, go through an entire process. The, the owners of those buildings are not wanting to go back in front of the board and redesignate commercial spaces to residential, those kinds of things. So we're, this is an opportunity to prevent, present other opportunities for housing and yet maintain some of the original idea of the approval. So that's, that's where it started. And the, I mean, this was a pretty big change. This is not a change that's totally new. We, there are communities that have already done the, the majority of this work for us. So that, that is what is helpful about this type of thing that we're proposing. We're definitely the only community nearby that's looking at this. So, um, that's what's kind of unique about it. But when I look at the increased affordable housing provisions that were recently brought in, that too, had, to me, and this is my building side, the things about this is, all right, that has to be offset somehow. And so by creating, this is not a, what it is doing is creating a prescriptive path that will have simpler provisions to meet for certain types of occupancies. So it's not like every business occupancy could take this space. But it would allow for some pretty unique situations to occur. I think it'd be pretty cool. Um, I, I really think it will. And I think it would, it presents an opportunity to offset some of that cost.
So it sounds like you're trying to make the minimal, um, adjustments or adaptations necessary so that we can have these things that are unique to Carbondale, like the housing mitigation, not unique, but not in the standard international code.
Yeah.
And find ways to.
Just to prevent, present other opportunities.
Okay. But I think you're hearing from Jess and, and I think the board seems to be on the same page just by looking around that we want to keep it simple. We want to keep it consistent. We don't want to add a lot of burden either for staff or developers in getting there. I want to make sure I call in Lauren because she's had her zoom hand raised for a while. Let's see if.
Can you hear me? Let's start there. Yes. Okay. So, um, the first thing that I wanted to say from 10 minutes ago was that we do have the whole question of, um, net zero, uh, and the path to net zero on the work session for February. Um, but I, I'm wondering, um, I'm not sure, Aaron, that I didn't interpret Jess's question the same way that you did just now about what, why we can't just adopt the 21 code without amending. Was that your question, Jess, or did I misunderstand that?
I just, I know that there are certain things that have to be amended to work for this jurisdiction, but I don't want, what I don't want to happen is that Aaron has to go through the whole code and, and increase the code so that it meets some hypothetical net zero plan that we're not even sure is where we want to head still. If we can eliminate some of that complication in order to more quickly get to a place where we are in line with today or three years ago, I would, I would be supportive of that, of not going through an entire code and being like, okay, well, in order to hit net zero, we have to increase the regulations for the IACC. So that was my question. It's not so much about these little cool opportunities.
Right. Well, I think, and Aaron, you can explain this because I'm, this is just a layperson's view. Uh, two things come to mind when you say that, Jess. The first one is that the board has already adopted the pathway to net zero, which has some um, very immediate requirements. The requirements for six and seven and 10 years from now, I don't necessarily think we need to put that in the code right now. But the requirements that are in there that are supposed to be hit in 24 and 25, um, those, that might be a different story. Um, the second thing is that if we are trying to do away with the R E B P, those are things that at, I don't know how many of them are already in the 21 code and how many of them would still be above and beyond and would require amendments. And those would all be energy code items. So I don't know if you want to speak to that, Aaron, but, um, you know, I, I can see, you know, if we think somebody's, something's coming down the pike 10 years from now, I don't necessarily think it needs to be in the code right now. But if it's supposed to be happening in 2024, then, you know, and the board already adopted it, then I think those are the things that Aaron is concerned about. But.
And that's where, like, I feel like the items that are on the current list for the 24s, 25s in that path to net zero, they're fairly reasonable and could be adopted in this. It, it is the longer term that I also think we need to be aware of though. And because part of that, I, I still haven't got my head wrapped around, like there's 27 provisions. Are we coming back and re-adopting new codes in 27? Like I could see myself having to do this. And that, that's what I'm, I, that part of it is something we need to work out still, but I don't know that it's a major issue at the current point in time.
I, I would just say, having been here when we adopted that plan, pathway to net zero, it was a, we don't know what this will look like. We got some advice from Jeff Dickinson, not a whole lot of other input, I think from Clear. We got some input. And we said, let's put this down on paper so that we can get started, but let's be really open to adjusting. So I think at this point, if you came to us as our building official and said, you know what, some of these things aren't really practical right now. And the best thing is to do what Jess is suggesting and get us to 2021 codes, I think we'd be open to that discussion with your expertise and.
That's where, I, I think most of this has been, the information's in my hands. It's a matter of compiling it in the proper look points in, in the codes and it takes a little bit of time to coordinate that. So I don't think we're gonna, I don't feel like the majority, and there may be items that I do pull to, set to aside and say, hey, I feel like this is designed to meet this requirement and I feel like we could do this. And I have already kind of started that process. If I, if I have information in my hands that I feel like could be maybe deferred and I would need that. Some additional approvals from that. That's, I, I intend to bring it that way.
I think that's good feedback. Are there any other topics from the code, um, either the, we, we haven't seen the amendments yet, but the general approach in the memo, um, or the fee table that we wanted to talk about.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yep.
The checklist, the RE, whatever it is checklist. I almost guarantee that the, the new codes are going to be better than whatever was in that checklist.
Yeah.
And so to me, it just seems like a waste of time to try to hit what was in the checklist and to convert the code to meet what was in the checklist so that we can get rid of the checklist. Just get rid of the checklist and let the code do the job.
For the majority of this, you're correct already. And that's what we've done. There are items like the exterior energy use, which we have in the REBP, which have expanded. They're in the fee table that I have here, um, because that's the most appropriate place to put them. Uh, and that, that type of stuff has grown, but it's, so it has a different schedule for commercial and residential and a few more items than it had in the past. Uh, but that is in line with most of our neighboring communities too, that are doing the same thing. So, um, again, I think there's a, I am still sorting out a lot of information that's, there's a lot with the big jump in code. There's, it's a big job.
Okay. Yeah. And well, I was just gonna add, I do, I mean, I remember the last update with Jeff. Um, I, I mean, that was the goal was to get rid of the checklist. And then, but adding these, um,
Exterior energy and we have some other ideas for how, in this part of that path and at zero, uh, for new construction is, you know, instead of using the REBP, going to a HERS rating program to do pre-energy or pre, uh, uh, energy offset stuff like solar or other types of improvements and then hitting in the secondary HERS score, which again is similar to most of the communities nearby. Um, I don't feel like we're going very far out of line right now. It, it's that farther down the line thing that I see a couple of bigger concerns that I'd like to talk about later.
Okay.
I also did invite you all to stop in my office anytime and take a look at what we're doing and ask questions. And if you have specific questions or items that you would like to understand how they, even a hypothetical, we can go through some of that stuff and show you what current code, new code would do. Um.
Yeah, that might be a good next step for you of us to take a deeper dive. Christina, do you have any thoughts on this one? I just want to make sure we go all the way around.
But you guys were saying, um, I wasn't, I'm not, you answered my question about that 15% green fee. I just always feel like constituents come up to me and say, wait, I'm doing the right thing. Why am I paying more for it? And that's what that green fee feels like to me. Um, without understanding that you could get some back. And, um, I'm also on board with, I mean, I feel like, you know, we want growth here. We want smart growth, but if it's too complicated, you're just, it's, you know, and the people, the, the people who you're, who aren't going to grow here are the people who you have to spend so much more money and complications on. And, and I don't know, is that who we don't want here in Carbondale? So that's just my whole thought on all this. But I feel like everybody's pretty aware of that. And, um, yeah. But thank you for the work you have done.
Okay. Thanks Christina.
Well, I just had a quick comment about timeframe. So we mid, middle of the year thought we might be able to get this.
I'm still hoping much faster than that.
I know, but so I was just double checking, are we going to be able to do this at the beginning of next year? Is it February?
Probably ideally around the February mark is what I think is going to be reasonable. Uh, my IPC is almost done. The, the challenges I run into is I take, I get everything pretty much ready and I go back to our current code adoptions. And I look at the amendments that were previously made. Those are generally made because they're important to a community. And right now I'm working on a few of the items within the IBC that have resulted in a conflict based on how the code has changed since 2009. And I'm trying to align that with both our land use, fire district regulations, state regulations, and make sure that when we come out of this, because we spend a lot of time sorting out the conflicts and that's what also heats up a ton of time in our office. So if we can spend our time right here and get this where we can eliminate a lot of that, the idea is to expedite our time in the future.
So it looks like we're still on track for early 2025.
Um, I just have two, um, I guess kind of comments and input. And it sounds like I wasn't sure, I wasn't aware that we didn't already have like, and the existing building code, because one of my questions was going to be, I just wanted to make sure that we make it kind of easy and simple for you and for folks in our community to add housing, whether that's making it easy to have a roommate or kind of a pseudo apartment for somebody, whatever. I would love to see us make that easier. We all know that folks have those in their homes. And instead of it being like, oh, they're violating code or they're violating, like, let's just make it so that you can have a kitchenette or a wet bar or whatever we call it, or we want to call it and expand those housing opportunities. So whatever that looks like in the code, I'm going to rely heavily on Jess to help me understand those.
I'm going to rely heavily on the land use code at that point. Cause it's generally in there that causes my most, I don't care if you have a second kitchen as long as it meets the code. So it's, it's often in
Exactly.
different section of our business here that causes those kinds of issues.
Yeah. And so I wanted to raise that for our next kind of discussion with P and Z, just making sure that we're continually working, making those adjustments to make stuff like that easier. And then I just, you had mentioned, and it kind of goes along with Colin's question on, um, timeline. It's just, what do you envision for public input? Like, are you, is it a survey? Is it?
So I definitely, since I get this all pretty much wrapping up, uh, even before we bring it for adoption, I'm going to open it for a public time and, and try and get feedback from contractors and others to go through this information as well and, and give me feedback, whether, you know, sometimes it, we're going to find things that do cost more because of some of these changes. I want that feedback though too. And I, I, again, I try and keep that in mind all the time as I'm developing this stuff. Um, and then once we get that and can consolidate it, we'll be bringing it to the board.
Okay.
I just say on, on the public comment, I think it's really important that we have some sort of public input on this. But I think we need to be sensitive to the fact that not everybody's going to want to do that and say who they are. Um, it's, it's, it's always a thing in the industry where we, uh, are nervous about going up against a building department because we all need our permits and we all need our inspections. And so I think there's some sensitivity to that when we're asking for public input. Like maybe there's an anonymous survey that can be filled out so that people can feel really comfortable talking about what they think of the code without fear of if they have a permit right now and they're getting inspections. I just don't want that fear out there.
I think that's a reasonable suggestion.
Cool. Thanks for bringing that up.
Thanks Jess. Anything else on building codes? It's a pretty detailed update. So, and I think, yeah, if you get that, um, feedback, hopefully the next time that we see it, it's either ready for adoption or pretty close.
I think that's where you're going to see the next, the next one's going to be a pretty big document too.
And I mean, what we really want to, what we really want to avoid there of course is that the contractors and architects and whoever shows up there and says, you know, there's all these major flaws and we haven't been involved or something like that. Like we gotta get that input at a time so that it's.
And that's exactly my ideas there too. Yeah. We don't want to have big battle on our hands when it's time to come up for adoption. We want to try and work out as many kinks in there as we can.
Okay. Well, thanks for the update, Aaron.
Absolutely. I'm looking forward to the next one.
Right. That was a lot. Um, maybe we can knock out this next one, um, pretty quickly, appendix A, um, which is resolution number 12, updates to the municipal code. And this is just the fee table. Jessica or Patrick or Lauren has anything to say about this one?
I can speak to, um, to the fee table in general, um, Um, the fees that have been changed, particularly with uh trash and water and sewer are all things that have already come before the board. We're just putting them in the appendix A. There are a couple of uh, there, there's actually one fee that I want to bring to your attention that um that we raised a little bit arbitrarily. When we have uh people who don't pay their water bill. Um, we char, we don't charge a whole lot in late fees. We charge twenty five dollar late fee. But when we have to shut people's service off because they are multiple months late. We always also had a twenty five dollar reconnect fee. And that is a lot more work than just putting something on somebody's um on somebody's bill. So we took that fee up to fifty dollars. I'm looking right now because I forgot to look for it, but Kevin did send me what those numbers were.
On page seven.
In the last thirteen months, we have only had thirteen shut offs. Um, but we have had five hundred and sixty seven late fees. So just so that you're aware, um, we did raise the the rehookup fee to fifty dollars from twenty five, and that is something that you have not seen previously. But everything else, I believe, is something that the board has already seen and approved.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification, Lauren. Any questions on this one?
Were the short term rental things, those are in red here too. Were those not in here before or?
They were in the ordinance itself and not in appendix A. So we took them in this update, we took them out of the ordinance and put them in appendix A with the rest of the fees. They're the same fees. They're just in a different place in the code.
All right. That's great.
And that's what Erin was talking about doing next year when we adopt the new codes. The fees will not be in the building code. They will be in appendix A with all the other town fees. That way you don't have to do a a a amendment to the code to raise a fee six percent or what have you. So.
All right. Other questions about the fee schedule update?
I I could move to uh the move to adopt the attached resolution. Uh, number twelve series of twenty twenty four, updating appendix A of the municipal code with the revised fee schedule becoming effective December third, twenty twenty four.
Well, second.
All right, motion by Chris, second by Jess. Any questions before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, let's take a um five minute break. And we'll come back and talk about short term rentals and then the aquatic center update. And that'll be it. We'll call the meeting back to order. Um, next item on the agenda is uh ordinance number eleven, series of twenty twenty four, which is short term rental code update. Uh, and these are updates that we've discussed at length, and they're just being made formal, the main one being the addition of fifty um permits that are for non-primary residences, not in the historic commercial core zone district. So uh with that, I can't see Lauren anymore, but Lauren or Jessica or Patrick, anybody want to add any? Add any more detail to that before we start a discussion?
Um, some of the language that's in the ordinance, um, I'll just say that um we were trying to make sure that we could add short term rentals in areas that were not in the H C C or were not principal residences. But you'll notice in the ordinance that we did put language in there that it still has to be in a zone district that allows for residences. Um, for example, if somebody wanted to take a warehouse in an industrial zone and make a few short term rentals in it, that would not be allowed if it wasn't um a use by right in that zone to have residences. Um, so really that, I don't know if you have any questions about how the language is put together. Certainly, um, Jessica and Patrick can weigh in if there's anything that they want to share. I know that I had spoken to Erica, um, and she had a couple of topics that she wanted to bring up with regard to this. So um, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think this is pretty much what the board um was looking for um when we had these other discussions earlier this fall.
Okay. Any clarifying questions about what we have in front of us before we get into any other details? Russ, did you have some? Okay. All right. Uh, other details then? Erica, did you have something?
Yeah, um, the more, so I was thinking about it a lot over a break before we even got our packet and then um. Just wanted to raise, because Chris had raised it actually last time we discussed it, this idea of removing um the inspection from the building department requirement. Um, and I think Chris had raised it in context to make it easier for people to have one as uh a short term rental within their primary residence. Like that could be one of the things we could do. And then I started researching uh regulations in a lot of other communities and really uh, the only one I could find is Glenwood Springs is the only one that does a building inspection requirement. So I was also thinking of our staff, and it's one more thing that we've thrown on their plate. And um, I was just really thinking that we could actually remove that. What a lot of other jurisdictions do is it's up to um, you know, during the license, they have a checklist that they just say, you know, this is our. We verify that we have all the safety things, whether that's egress windows, um carbon monoxide detectors and stuff. So to me, it feels like it would simplify it and then take um one more thing off of the plate of our staff, whether that's being coordinated by the clerk or and or our building department. Um, and it's not something that most other jurisdictions are doing with their short term rentals. So I just wanted to raise it as something I'd be supportive of removing.
A potential addition to that could be that we still have maybe ten randomized inspections a year that the department picks out or something so that you're not completely off the hook, but you're not, it's not like they have to do it for everyone, but maybe there's still a sense of accountability coming in there.
Like an IRS audit. You don't know if you'll get it, but really, right?
If they have to do ten a year or whatever, that's a lighter load than redoing them all all the time, I guess, or.
Wait, Jessica, did you have?
Yeah, um.
Yeah.
One, we knew this was coming.
I gave staff a heads up.
Yeah. One of the things that Erin, the building official, and I had talked about briefly, because I was pretty tied up today. Um, was the potential of maybe doing an inspection every other year and only for new licenses. So new licenses would get an inspection and then we would um only inspect every other year as long as they maintain their license. Um, that was a proposal that we had. Um, Mark, did you have anything to?
Whenever you're ready. Address the liability issue.
Yeah, uh, Mark can address the liability issues um with having inspections and without having inspections. Um, but I did want to point out some things that you guys have probably not been aware of in the short term rental program and some of the things that we have found during those physical inspections. Um, so the inspections were required, not physical inspections, but licenses were required to provide photographs of all of their egress windows and a floor plan of their property. If you don't know how to do a floor plan or even the the concept of space is is foreign to you. Um, it it was really hard to get applicants to provide a floor plan. So I just wanted to to put that out there. Um, that is where a lot of my time came from and then Aaron's time, once he came aboard, um interpreting those floor plans. Pictures were provided of the interiors of egress windows. Um, that does not provide proof that it's an egress window. Just a picture of a window does not provide any proof. Um, those windows may be inoperable or may um not actually be a true egress. So, you know, physically viewing the property outside of a picture um was helpful. Some of the things that we did find during those physical inspections were that bedrooms opened into a garage, which um is a very dangerous situation and can provide carbon monoxide poisoning. Um, lofts were used as living spaces with, which were accessed by dangerous ladders, not approved for habitation. So they were originally um per the code and per their building plans and permits, they were allowed to use that loft space only for storage. And when we did a physical inspection, we found a bedroom, a bed in that space, and it was being advertised as a second bedroom, which was not allowed. So I just, I don't want to go the entire route of not doing physical inspections because I I think they do have a value. And I think um we can certainly maintain a right to inspect properties. A ten a year is probably not necessary, but um some sort of physical inspection, I think, should be allowed. So and then there is a liability issue that Mark can touch on.
So thank you for the heads up. Always the phone tree worked this morning. It went from you to Lauren to me to. That's good. To Cirsa. Um, and so I mean, really quickly try to address that much of it's a concern or not, but basically at my request, Jessica reached out to Cirsa and we got a thoughtful response from the Sam Light, who's general counsel for Cirsa. He's a fabulous lawyer. And he um gave a very thoughtful analysis very quickly that basically said that um I think in general Cirsa is quite comfortable with not mandating inspections each and every time somebody applies for a new permit or renews an existing permit. Um, but and they were also supportive of a attestation or whatever you want to call it affidavit, where each applicant attests that they have carbon monoxide, you know, fire extinguishers, egress windows, whatever else they want to add to the list. That they're fine, but they did suggest not to totally walk away. And this is sort of dovetails with what you just said, not to totally walk away from the inspection uh authority. And to have to reserve in the ordinance some ability for, at least on a complaint driven basis, if not on a broader basis for the town on as needed basis. I think we need time to get some language if you want to go this direction. But basically imagine you have a neighbor call in and say, my gosh, that Airbnb next door is going nuts and in indoor fires with no alarms or whatever, and we can't, we can't get in there. You know, there's just no uh no cause for that absent some kind of criminal violation. So so I think having reserving um some authority to get in there, um at least occasionally is is advisable, even if it's not done each and every time for cost reasons or otherwise. So I supported, I thought Sam's advice was a great kind of middle ground that hopefully addressed Erica's questions. But um he suggested not to totally walk it. And the liability issue, which I guess I didn't totally get to. Sam thoughtfully pointed out that the, if the town were to be sued, there's no claim, I mean, anybody can make a claim for anything, but there's really no easy claim against the town for a negligent failure to inspect. Um, you know, generally speaking, but even specifically in the case of of uh, there's no waiver of governmental immunity, basically. The town is immune from most liability associated with this, not enormous liability. But obviously, once uh Aaron or whoever he delegates to are inside someone's house, we do have some obligations to respect privacy and not not abuse the inspection right. And we'll want to think about appropriate notices, whether it be twenty four hours or whatever, not to. You don't just show up and do a non-concerned. Um, and and so uh, you know, those things need to be dealt with, but if they are, they Cirsa stands behind not, if he basically said, look, if you care about carbon monoxide and smoke detectors and think that's important from a life safety standpoint, I suggest you don't totally abandon the idea of an inspection.
Uh, can I just add something really quickly to to what Mark just said? In some of the examples that Jessica used, um, the way that we found the loft with the dangerous ladder that was supposed. the way that we found the loft with the dangerous ladder that was supposed to be for storage only was by a complaint. So if we reserved the right and the authority to inspect, we would do the exact same thing that we did with regard to that particular property is we would notify them that there's been a complaint and that they need to contact the building department to set up an inspection. So I think that as long as we retain that authority, you know, for things like that, we would do exactly the same thing that we did before.
Yeah. I sent the form that the city of Aspen requires and it's exactly that. It's like, I attest that these things are installed and then there is language and it says like, I understand the city can do an inspection. I think it's exactly that of within 24 hours or whatever it is, or with 24 hours notice or something like that. If we want to go that, like there are templates out there if folks wanted to.
And we have existing, you know, for zoning violations, for instance, there's an inspection right that can be triggered after notice. And I think we would mimic that. It's just not in this STR ordinance as drafted. One more very minor thing that while I have your attention here, in the packet version on page 142 of your packet, at the very top, there's, there's some language there that's in bold. That's an error. It shouldn't be bolded. That's existing code text that accidentally got bolded when the ordinance was formatted, so.
So we don't have that big of a packet, Mark. Ours is just a seven-page.
Just, oh, I'm on the, I'm on the entire packet. Gosh, it's.
That's okay. Just what section is it?
Section 61060, which spills over. It starts on one page and then spills over to the next page.
So that's on page five.
The bolded language above 61070 should not be bolded. And if and when we get to where you adopt something, I would ask that it be without that bingo.
Paragraph of 61060.
Exactly.
Okay, gotcha. Maybe a clarifying question then for staff on, as we discuss this inspection issue. It sounds like, Erica, if I'm understanding you correctly, your goal is to kind of reduce the burden on staff to do all of these units inspected every year. Is that currently what we do? So if we've got fifty licenses, we're doing fifty inspections a year?
Yeah.
Okay.
The the bulk of it is in January because we did have a lot of licenses expire December first, twenty-three. And so we did a lot in January. We'll do a lot more in January again, just because they're on an annual cycle. So, but it is, it's fifty, fifteen to twenty-minute inspections a year. They schedule that with the building department themselves. I will admit that based on building department feedback, it has been quite a pain to get people to schedule the inspection. It's really not, hasn't been too onerous on them. I don't think.
He's got a lot of other stuff going on, he might say.
Yeah.
And we're increasing the number. That was where I was like, okay, well, for, I just want to be cognizant of what we're asking, even with additional staff. We're putting a lot on the building department.
I mean, I wonder if a middle ground is that, I would imagine you'd get inspected when you first get your permit. And then it seems unlikely that you're then going to take away all the safety features. Somebody could, but then we've got the caveat that it could be inspected on, you know, report or randomly. Sort of we reserve the right, but I don't see a need for us to be doing this every year. I didn't realize that we were doing it every time that they renewed. Yeah, please.
I, I feel like a initial inspection is a very important part of the process. In fact, Glenwood being the only one nearby that does it, I worked on that to start that one too, all those years ago. So I find it interesting that they maintain it and they did not decide to get rid of that program. I think it's a pretty important program that when I worked there uncovered a lot of things. And in the short time that I've been dealing with this here in Carbondale, we have definitely found some very concerning situations that wouldn't have been found without at least showing up on site. The affidavit, I like with Jessica's ideas there and doing like a periodic thing. Maybe it's every two or three years where we follow up again on on an inspection of a property, just to make sure from a maintenance standpoint, things are good. I think that's totally reasonable and have an affidavit affidavit in those periods where we're not subject to that. I think those are great. I really do. And the inspections are short. That that is truly, this is, we are there, this is not like a building inspection when we're doing construction. We are there to look for the key life safety elements and then we're out of there. So this is generally speaking, not a big deal until we find these very unsafe things. And that, that's where it all started at least. And I would mainly support at least that initial inspection and periodics.
Okay.
But I definitely could be behind not doing this every year, especially because you're right, most of the time, things are not changed. Most of the time.
Thanks, Aaron. Other thoughts from the board? And then I do want to open it up to the public. We've got a few people here who I think want to comment. And this is, you know, there's more than just the inspection issue here. There's also like, we've had the discussion, we're adding the fifty. Anything else before we hear from the public?
No, I support where we're going. I think the middle road.
Okay.
I just, it seems onerous to me to have inspections, like at some level, if you're willing to have people in your house and you're renting it out, like you're taking that liability on. And it's not the town's job to make sure that it's perfect. So I don't think we should have any, and I think we should preserve the right to have it if there's a complaint or otherwise.
Okay, thanks, Jess. Anybody from the public want to speak on this issue? You can just stand at the podium, please state your name for the record. Have about three minutes.
One minute.
Okay.
Nina Peterson, I think the inspection was ten minutes. I think I got one suggestion. I think if there is a notation, went to Peterson, saw unit one, unit two, recommended the move the smoke detector from here to here. And that's it. And if that appears to be a red enough flag for an inspector, then that becomes something that they would want to go back and see. They have no red flags. I think it simplifies, as you were saying, in terms of time. It's, the onus is on us. You, you're not going to provide an unsafe place for somebody who's going to come stay. You know, you have people with two-year-olds and two-year-olds are the most dangerous guests you have. Really, because they get into things. And so I, I have a place, two places that I keep in mind, two-year-olds. Other than that, safety is fire, safety is gas stoves, various other things. But again, inspection, if the inspector doesn't see anything, like the windows all comply, I'm not going to change my windows year to year. Right? And I know I have a door that's smaller than your average door, but our building is the oldest one in town. And it was acceptable. But if that flag doesn't prompt another visit, spare yourselves. Right? Just note it. Right? Wouldn't that be easiest?
Okay.
That's my only thought.
Any other comments from the public?
I got one more if I may.
Sure.
A compliance inspection takes much more of my time or my staff's time than doing a evaluation beforehand. So when we get complaints, we do that investigation, that can take a lot of hours. So a quick inspection on a property to issue a license is much better use of our time than letting everything go free for all. There was a, I wasn't here for the part of this, but the initial short-term rentals, when it was initiated, did not have an inspection program. There were a series of complaints that generated the, where that requirement came from. And that all initiated before I started here. And when I started here, I was like, I like that program because I think that's a great idea. But yeah, just to point out that a single complaint that we have to get involved in can use up more time than inspecting all of these.
So you'd rather, it sounds like, inspect them once when they first get their permit?
Yep.
And then?
And then there may be some periodic times, but in general, I just don't, not like the idea of none at all. And then respond only to a complaint because I feel like that uses a lot more of my time than than the opposite.
Okay, good to know. Is there anybody online who wants to comment? Nope. Okay. Well, let's bring it back to the board then and try to give some direction. I mean, I think we might have arrived at a middle ground of an initial inspection is required and then it's not required on renewal. But with your permit, you're signing something that says it could be inspected sort of for any reason at any time as you hold the permit. To leave that, it could be a complaint basis. It could be just that, oh, we haven't been in there in five years. Let's go check that one. But not, I wouldn't want to make that too regimented where it's every two years or three years or something that we have to then keep up with. Does that sound like a reasonable middle ground? Does that work?
Yeah.
It's more than you want, but that's. Okay, then what do we need process-wise here? Do we need a motion? I guess I'm asking you, Mark, to bring back ordinance number eleven with that change, like on a consent agenda?
Yeah, I mean, if we do that, we really, I mean, feel free to take a motion and direct us. But if that's how you proceed, you know, the actual action will be the consent agenda approval. It'll be on your agenda at that point. So I think that's probably better just to, if we make sure we get, this is such a wonky ordinance that I'd rather make sure it's perfect and try to wing the language right now. But I mean, it's just, it's possible we could get through right the second, but I, I prefer the consent agenda route. I don't know if Lauren has any other thoughts.
I would agree. It's not an emergency that we get this done at this meeting. We want to make sure that it's right.
Okay, so it sounds like you don't need a motion then if the direction is clear. That we're saying inspection on first license and then some method through which people agree to an inspection basically at any point that while they hold the license.
And the attestations of compliance.
Yeah. My only other question unrelated to inspections was just the, how the town clerk outgoing and incoming feel about managing this. It says it's on a first-come, first-served basis for these fifty. Like, let's imagine that we have sixty applicants. Are we comfortable with this? And I think we've always envisioned this to be, those aren't competing with the current pool, or are they? Like, we, we never wanted to put anybody at risk of losing a license. So I think there's probably ten or so out there right now that are non-HCC and not primary residents. They should be able to renew. So then there's something like forty. I don't know exactly.
Yeah, there, I think there's about twenty current ones, so it would be a total of fifty. Those ones who are currently licensed would not be losing their spot. They are already included in that fifty.
Continue to renew.
Continue to renew.
Yeah. And so if you get, I think it would be possible that you get fifty applicants for thirty licenses. And are you comfortable this is just a first-come, first-served? Or do you think we need to put anything else in place to manage that process?
I won't be here to manage that process, so I.
Okay, yeah.
I'm going to admit that I'm the one who added the first come, first served. That was not in the original draft that staff gave me. I, there was nothing in there. And so I, I just thought we needed some kind of you know, a decision-making, you know, something to point out if we have an issue. But if there's a better way to allocate, if you have sixty applications for fifty, I think we need to have some methodology for how that gets decided, decided other than we like you better than we like.
Yeah, I mean, I just wonder if you want to add something that leaves it at the staff level that like, or a, you know, random selection process that may be amended from time to time or something like that. Like if we go through the first round of these and we're okay, but then the next year, if there's three spots available, you know, where people lining up the night before to get first in line, like I just don't know how you manage that process. And so it seems like other places have done this. There's a lot of examples of this out there. I'd just like to give you the flexibility to develop a process that's not really strict in the ordinance, Erica.
In my researching current regulations of all the neighboring communities that have short-term rentals, it was either Avon or Eagle. They were the only ones I could find. It was specifically noted that their waitlist is prioritized by whether you reside in the area. So like second homeowners, I would, I would assume that's what this means is you're lower on the waitlist. If somebody wants to rent out a room in their home.
Do they make the primary distinction in there?
But they don't make the primary distinction. So, yeah, but it was just one way that somebody else is doing it. I think they just have a full, limited one hundred or two hundred or something like that. So that might be different than, it is different than us. But that was the only other way.
That's an example of another way or, but that's only solves that particular criteria, right?
Right.
There's other, anyway.
Yeah.
I don't think it has to be in here, but if it isn't, then it's going to be more of a free-for-all in terms of making those.
I'm comfortable with that. I just wonder if while we're at it, we add some other or, you know, a process developed to randomly select applicants, like just to give you an out so that it doesn't become hard. I'm thinking that the first year we'll probably have enough that it's pretty easy to manage. They don't all flood in on the first day. But I'm thinking that after that, when there's only a couple available, it might be hard to manage. What's the deadline and?
Yeah.
What does the board think of that? Just giving ourselves one more option at the staff level? You can always come back and present that to us and say, okay, we know that we're only going to have a few licenses coming up this year. So here's our process. We can just say, okay.
Right. And that could be lottery, that could be prioritized waitlist or something like that.
The.
Yes, Lauren.
Does it have to, I mean, are you thinking that it really needs to be in the ordinance? Could it be a, a policy that is set out as part of the application process on the website?
I think it could.
Not necessarily in the ordinance. It could be, you know, just a stated staff policy.
I, I think it could. I, I think we might want to consider having the board bless the policy per resolution or otherwise. But yes, it doesn't, that length, that, the first come, first served can come out. I'm not insisting on that from a legal standpoint. It was just the absence of any guidance that caused me to suggest it.
And Ben and I talked earlier about, you know, if we've got fifty, and right now we have, let's say fifteen or twenty that have been grandfathered in. I don't know that we're gonna be having a real capacity problem for licenses, at least not anytime in the near future, but I could be wrong.
So I think what I'm suggesting is that when we see this on the consent agenda, staff has worked on that part to update it so that you can have a process to manage a lot of applications for limited numbers without making it really rigid in the ordinance.
Okay.
And so it could still say first come, first served. And if they, you know, exceed that number, it'll be randomized with a process. Because I think we'd probably want to go with something fairly random, fairly simple, not a whole point system.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Quick question.
Yeah.
So sort of in that, I know we talked about this, I'm sorry if I, if I've missed it in here. In terms of a single owner of multiple properties, but where, where did we land on that?
We have not regulated that so far.
And I see someone could buy, could theoretically develop a property with five houses on it, apply for next year for five short-term rentals in town and essentially kind of run, run a block, a part of a block as, as a hotel operation. Okay. I mean, I just, I, I just want to sort of, I, I don't, I, I haven't sat down to pencil the numbers out, but I'm sure someone will. And if that's a situation that we end up, and then at the same time, we're trying to build affordable housing elsewhere, it seems, it seems like, I think before we, before we all say go on this, we, we need to kind of consider, maybe it's considering it again, what we're, what we're kind of opening ourselves up to a little bit. And maybe it's, maybe it's not a big deal, but we're, we're creating the possibility of thirty, thirty places. And if it's, if it's in service of a, we're vibrant downtown, wonderful. If it's at the detriment and the loss of, of long-term housing, we need to be really aware that that's a possibility.
Well, if somebody built a five-unit town home, one of those would have to be under our. So we'd get one of them.
Yeah.
But yeah, we don't have a limit right now.
So would we, do we want to consider limiting the number of properties that someone can in, in this system?
We discussed it originally and decided not to. I think Nina has the example of running a few different ones in one property and it works well. She's also in a zone district that allows, oh, only one.
The only one that has multiple.
Only one so far.
Right, right. It's an entire block.
There were, there weren't any others when we, when we did the survey before we regulated. There were people who believed that there were a number of investors who were coming in and buying up properties, but and using them as short-term rentals. And we did not find that to be the case.
Okay.
I, I know that Brittany has her hand up. I don't know if you saw that, Ben.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Brittany.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, um, I think that's why I originally suggested um, for the second homeowner. Um, fifty licenses to limit that to one per. Homeowner, because then you have that situation where you have a main house and an A D U, or you can have a main house, a mother in law suite and an A D U, what if you? Were, are renting all three of those? But while the commercial core properties, it's like those are made for lodging, let those be unlimited, while you're fifty, you're limiting. To one per. Owner. So that would, that would eliminate your issue of these second homeowners. Owning multiple. Properties and having multiple licenses, whereas the commercial core, you know. We're saying those are meant for lodging.
I guess. I would, this is probably making it too complicated now, but I may be within that, maybe it can be left within that process of a waitlist or whatever. Of just a stipulation that you're dropped to the bottom of the priority list essentially.
There you go.
You'd get, basically, yeah.
Or something.
I don't know if that's simple enough to.
Well, that's something that also leaves it in that realm of outside the ordinance, we could tweak that system a little bit if we see it not working. That's a good point, I hadn't really thought of that, and it makes it less of a sure thing as an investor, it's like, I might not get all five, so I'm not gonna invest in five.
That's, I guess that's my concern, I, 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 I think some of that uncertainty is important in this, so that, I, I mean, beca-. Because we don't necess, I think we don't, we wouldn't view it as a success, probably, uh, unless it was done somehow incredibly well, which is always a possibility, but that, that someone would come in and build. Four units and with the idea of it basically being a little hotel spot. But yeah, if there's, if there's no, no uncertainty, again, you know, there's nothing that, that, that goes with the sale of the unit, we, we, we're clear about that in here, um, but I think, yeah, the multiple unit thing that you. You're kind of back at the bottom of the list, makes sense to me. Makes.
Okay, so it sounds like we're back to keep it, that's okay, it's good to have these discussions while we're, um, while we're on it, and that way we can leave it for a couple of years and then come back to it and see what needs to be updated, so. Staff clear, we're, we're saying basically, give yourself some room to devise a process that's not encoded in the resolution or in the ordinance. To manage if there's more than, than there is supply, if there's more demand than supply. And the inspection is on first apple, first permit, uh, first license, and then uh, as needed after that. Any other input on this one? Sounds like we don't need a motion, so we'll just uh. Take it up on consent at an upcoming meeting. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. All right, moving on to the last item on our agenda, then, uh, Carbonell Aquatics Center project update. See the whole team here, pretty much. Thanks, Erin.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too. Thanks, Nina. All right, Cynthia, Andy, Eric, thank you all for being here.
You bet, and we should have some uh, folks online to potentially. Taylor. Should be online, yep.
And Chris is there too.
And I see Hollis as well.
Okay, great, excellent. Um, all right, thanks, um, last time we came in front of you um, for pool update, we uh, had some uh. Outstanding grant asked out there, and because we didn't know the uh, results of those yet. We actually um. Talked to you guys about utilizing some of our rec sales and use tax surplus funds um, as a contingency kind of on the contingency, and so. Um, unfortunately, we did not get the Goco grant, um, we also did not get the T-Mobile grant, and so. I'm glad we had thought ahead about other ways we could fund this project um, at that time. And so what I wanted to do tonight for the pool update is really. Run uh. And, you know, expenditures and revenues spreadsheet for you to kind of see where the project sits. And we really, you know, hadn't done that, um, because everything has been in flux, you know, the, the grants were in flux. Um, the expenditures obviously were in flux, the adults were all in flux, so, so we really needed to take a, a break. Sit down, look at if we didn't raise another penny with our capital campaign, where did that put us? And so, so that's the exercise you're gonna see um, in front of you. As far as the, the spreadsheet numbers there, so it's really a revenues and expenditure um, with the budget implications, cause that's the other piece. That uh, we hadn't really provided you with and that we also finance need to know, we also needed to know to, to really look forward. Um, how to afford um, this project, how to look at the adults, how to see if we can get those, those built, the goal here is to build this pool once and to build it right. Right, that's our goal, and, and we have an opportunity to do that right now, and we're gonna need to be fairly creative to do that. With this process, but we, by running this revenue and expenditure, you know, look, really kind of in depth look. You know, to date. We're, we're there, we can build this project, we can build this project the way it's designed, we can build this project with all the adults, we can build this project for the future. Um, and I'm, I got super excited when we, when we, we did this exercise, right, cause, cause we haven't been there sometimes in this project, and we've been very, very far away from that sometimes in this project. Um, and so I'm, 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 I'm really excited now because. Our fundraising um, and our efforts to fundraise have started to, to pay us back. Um, and the process um, right now is, we're, we're looking pretty good, we're seeing momentum. You know, people have realized this is a project that's out there that is, that is needed for the town, it's a project that people are supporting, and I want to. Um, Cynthia Colbrook to, who's our capital campaign manager, kind of just give you guys an update on where we sit with that, we're gonna start, start there, cause, cause it's good news, so.
Great, thanks, Eric.
It is good news, uh, it, it's been admittedly a very slow progress campaign, I think it's taken a while for people to really grasp that a municipality is doing a fundraising campaign. Uh, as Eric's report said to you, we're just a little bit shy of one point four million. And that there are several initiatives underway for the remainder of this year. I wanted to just talk with you briefly about factors that affect fundraising success in any setting, whether it's a municipality or a nonprofit. Awareness of the organization is obviously a non-issue here. Recognition of the need, I think it's very clear to most people that there's a need to replace the aquatics facility, but not necessarily that much awareness of why a fundraising campaign. So we are going to ramp up marketing after the first of the year to really explain all those variables. Um, organizational infrastructure is an important consideration, just so you know that you've got the wherewithal to run a campaign. I find Eric Brenlinger and Margaret Donnelly extraordinary in all they do and. How they uh, managed so many different issues. Um, but with some of the support hasn't always been there, and it's getting better every day since the new aquatics facility manager has started. Another factor is willingness to volunteer, there's a nine person volunteer campaign cabinet that has been dedicating time and attention to this. Willingness to contribute is obviously amongst constituents, there's got to be people who are willing to contribute. And as you know, we have received contributions from a variety of types of entities from government grants. To so, to the uh, s- social service organizations, if you will, with the Rotary Club pledging four thousand, the. Uh, Rebecca Lodge pledging ten thousand, and so that's still an ongoing focus, then of course, a lot of individuals. And businesses are giving and are being solicited. Recently, we've had a, an uptick, as Eric mentioned, we've had. Uh, a recent gift of fifteen thousand, another one of fifty thousand, and another one of two hundred and fifty thousand, so that's the trend we want to see, obviously. Um. Another really important factor, they're all important, but really a very important one is. The organization's leadership, and in this setting, there's layers of leadership, there's this body. There's the Board of Park Commissioners, and I realize that's only one of many that you are working with. Uh, and then there's this campaign cabinet. The main message I was hoping to deliver this evening, there's a few, but fundraising for a municipality is unusual, but it's not unique. A part of my professional background is that I was retained as the first managing director of the Cincinnati Parks Foundation, which was formed by the Board of Park, uh, by the. Uh, town trustees uh, to raise private support for the public parks. Um, and. The basic truth about successful fundraising, whether it's municipality or a public private partnership or. A nonprofit is that it takes a team, it's an all hands on deck kind of affair, and most of you have probably been involved with nonprofits, some of you even run them. And uh, I think you know that to be true, that it just takes everyone. Uh, in June, when Ben and Lauren and I happened to meet up. Coincidentally on the same street corner at the June first Friday. Um, we had an impromptu conversation and I heard them say, this is a town priority, it's something that's underway, and. If, you know, the, some people may have disagreed with the location, some people may have disagreed with the fact it's not year round, but it is happening, and so it's really important. For the whole team to be in favor of it. Uh, just to give you a sense of uh, going back to the, the organization's leadership. The campaign cabinet has so far eighty eight percent of them have made pledges or gifts to the campaign, the Parks and Rec Commission is sixty six percent. And the trustees are at forty two percent, so. I'm here to implore you all to make a contribution so that we can get to a hundred percent in all three of these leadership bodies. Because that will be a very strong message after the first of the year, when we are really ramping up to. In beyond the individual one on one major gift solicitations that we've been doing. And we are appealing to the whole community. If we can say there's a hundred percent giving by all of the leadership bodies, that incentivizes others. I, I really want to impart some, a reason for optimism now, I know that you all uh, have multiple responsibilities, and I have the greatest respect for all you do, but I. Want to encourage you to consider a different hat in addition to the ones you wear for the various commissions, and. Because this isn't just about the Parks and Rec Commission, it's a fundraising campaign. So I hope that with a fundraising campaign hat on, you all can. Feel. The responsibility for being in favor of it, even as you have to debate different components of it. We have. A big hope this week, having had the interest expressed by a longtime swimmer. In making a significant six figure gift, and our hope, it's not confirmed, but our hope is that we will have had the meeting with that donor. And receive a commitment by your meeting next week when you have to make a decision about these, about these, uh, the expenditure of funds. So that's the goal. We hope we can accomplish it, and I reiterate that I hope all of you will demonstrate your commitment so that we can. Blow our own horn about that, toot our, toot our own horn, or whatever the expression is. So I'll take any questions, but I know Eric has other items that you're all gonna be hearing about.
Thanks, Cynthia, I mean, I might just backtrack one step, you very casually mentioned a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar donation just then, I just don't know if you want to expand on the success recently, like that's. I heard about that this morning for the first time in my meeting with Lauren and knew that the rest of the board would find out tonight, and I just think that that's really exciting, and I don't know.
Very.
I, I just want to at least note that, like, that's, that's grant level, you know, that's, that's a really big um.
And it was unsolicited. It was, we don't know whether it was the signage in town, the. Boots that we've been doing all summer, whatever marketing we've been doing, or people reading the packets. Um, it was, it was a happy surprise.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
And then you said there was another one, what were the other numbers on the large ones recently?
Uh, fifty thousand. And, and I think I could divulge where those came from, because they have not been asked to be anonymous, the two hundred and fifty thousand was from the Max Simon Foundation, Bren Simon's. Family Foundation, and uh, the fifty thousand, and I was surprised this wasn't a requirement to be anonymous, is from the Wexner family.
That's huge, three hundred thousand dollars combined right there, and then I think you mentioned another one that was ten.
Uh, fifteen thousand, and I frankly don't know who that was.
Okay, but I just want to note, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars very recently um, toward this is a huge accomplishment, so.
Yeah.
Thank you to the fundraising committee and all the work that's gone into raising awareness so that those are really starting to roll in now. So that's included when you started off and said we're at around one point four million.
That is included, and it's just shy of one point four.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions for Cynthia before we move on to project updates?
And that's only two hundred grand shy of our, the goal, right, was one point six, right?
The minimum is one point six, our real goal, and speaking through a fundraiser's lens, is two point five.
Okay.
You know, so that, as Eric said, everything can be done right upfront without further expenditures or delays. Or change orders.
Okay, let's roll on.
Okay, um, what else is included in your packet, so that, that uh, revenue and expenditures kind of worksheet, um, on the, on the back of that was the adult, so I just wanted to. Make you aware of that, what we showed, and, and that is utilizing.
And can you just point us the revenue expenditure worksheet that you're referring to, I just want to make sure I'm on the right document.
Yeah, it's, it's this document here, it's a color coded one.
What's that called, and I, I don't know if that's. We do either.
Is it, it's not the V E proposal?
No, it's a, should just be that uh, should be listed as the. Yeah, budget revenues and expenditure.
We don't have it.
Yeah.
Really?
Could we make a quick copy, I mean, I think that that's probably the most important document this evening.
Oh, interesting.
I'd like to follow along with.
Yeah, it's two sided, so. I'm sorry, yeah, it's color coded, so it, it really laid out, you know, where the money's coming from, and, and whether it's a donation, whether it's a grant, whether.
Thank you, Cynthia, I didn't know you were leaving, thank you so much.
Thank you, great to meet you.
Yeah, sure, so um. We can talk about some other stuff here that, 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 while she's making copies of that, so. Um, so in, you did get the Wember project uh, update report, isn't that? That's in there, okay, great, um, and do you have any questions on that, we do, I, I'm not sure if Chris is on, Chris was sick, he's our Wember. Rep, Chris Silverberg, and so he, he was sick, that's why he's not here today, um, but if you have any questions.
He's not even there.
Oh, he's there, okay.
Yeah.
He's somewhere.
Okay. All right, thanks, so yeah, the, um, any questions for Chris on, on his kind of project update, things are moving. Uh, you know, pretty well over there, and, and uh, and, and so the, the one. Um, thing that I know you guys wanted to just kind of look at tonight for a project update is the project risks and analysis of that, so. Um, you know, it's something we haven't really talked a lot about with you, so we wanted to just include that in this monthly report, just. Where we've, where Wember as the owner's rep feels there might be some risks and, and or um. And need some additional analysis, so um, we will be seeing some change orders to the project, that's a normal thing for this type of project. Um, and we are working on some, some of the uh, elements like the, what he talks about here, um, the schedule impacts uh. On the backwash holding tank design, so we had a meeting on that today, it is not in time to get anything uh, in, in the packet. Um, but we're moving forward on that, and we can, maybe Taylor will want to talk about that also. And uh, and then just the inclement weather con- conditions, so um, just want to cover that the cost of the inclement weather conditions will be. Deducted from the construction contingency, that's uh, how we've set it up with A D Miller. And so we'll just keep you updated on those, those uh, kind of change orders and uh, anything we see as kind of a project risks. Let's know we are, we are, we are working on them, so. Um, any questions for, for Chris? Any questions for, for Chris Silverberg or Wember rep?
Jessica.
I just have a question. Um, thanks for including the risks and analysis. I was hoping to see a little bit more. Um, I know that much of the risk profile in a project like this is in excavation. Are we through all of the excavation at this point, or are we still, are we, do we still need to excavate for the actual building?
The big one right now is this, uh, backwash tank. And so because the placement of the tank, which is right in between the property of the Forest Service property line and our new building, there's a huge exercise going on right now, kind of what Eric alluded to for excavation for that. And it's the, what's been designed by the structural engineer and also some intent from the, uh, the civil is that the, uh, shoring of this, this hole, if you will, for this tank is gonna be really, um, impacted right up against the new building foundation wall. So those items are still being, um, uh, vetted. And I know Eric alluded to a meeting that occurred today. We're, we're, and Taylor can expand on this, cuz I wasn't able to attend the meeting. But, uh, we've gone back to the town to see if we can, uh, work some on this, um, storage tank to, to get it down to what it used to provide flow from the original facility. Taylor, do you wanna expand on any of that?
Uh, I mean, I think that's a decent summary of what the holding tank conversation was. It's still sort of a moving target. We're waiting on some calculations before we can really give good information about changing the size of the tank. Ultimately, we're hoping to reduce the size, right, so it costs less, it's a smaller excavation effort. But I think just generally to answer your question, the excavation is not done. The building foundations are still upcoming. The spa and the entertainment pool also still need to be excavated, so there's some amount of risk still in the dirt.
And, thank you, that's helpful. Is there, would you say that that's the majority of the risk that's, that we're looking at right now, is, is the remaining excavation and the backwash holding tank?
Yes. Uh, and, and also, the update that we're wanting to bring to the table tonight is we've been working with A.D. Miller, the general contractor on the value engineering list. And they've been able to, uh, I don't wanna say finalize, but they've been able to really zero in on some of the pricing for some of the design modifications that, uh, Land and Shelter's gonna talk a little bit about tonight. But, um, uh, those items, um, are being, you know, monitored. But, uh, the biggest right now is this, this holding tank. And the other thing too, that Eric alluded to is the, uh, the weather, uh, costs. So we've asked A.D. Miller to put together a, um, proposed, uh, cost of what they see from the month of November through to March to, uh, provide weather protection. And so right now, we're working with that list, and they'll be providing a weekly update on what's been, uh, spent to date for those type of expenditures. But, um, we're also, uh, using that from the construction contingency.
So I have one quick clarifying question about the winter protection. Was there an allowance in the original budget for a winter protection, knowing that we were doing construction in the winter?
There was not. What, what was?
But that's coming out of the contractor's contingency, not the town's contingency.
That is correct. Um, the reason being that there was not an allowance for that was, as you know, the budget was really tight. But also, the original schedule that was issued in part of the approved GMP agreement was that this work was to start approximately three to four weeks ahead of where we're currently at. Um, but, um, in working with the team, uh, right now, the, uh, the CPM that's been issued we're able to pick up this time as we get into the, the latter part of, uh, the winter and the first part of spring. So, um, that's, that's really kind of what's triggered that.
I just wanna clarify that three to four weeks would not have made it so that we weren't doing construction in the winter. So it's just, I'm surprised that there was no winter protection allowance, knowing that we were gonna be doing this work, especially excavation and concrete in the winter.
Uh, the original schedule, like I said, was, was having this done in, um, uh, the latter part of September and October. And, you know, we're having to deal with it now in the latter part of November, so there was a push. There's, there's a lot of other details to that extension, but, uh, um, all in all, you know, there was not an allowance set aside for that, and, uh, the budget just wouldn't, wouldn't allow for it at that time.
Why, why would that be a reasonable budgetary consideration if the, if the facts on the ground were such that it was inevitable? I feel like that's not, that's not where you, I, I, maybe I don't, I'm not getting something, but, uh, it doesn't seem like that's a reason, that's a, that's a place to trim a budget when you're not making, when you're not changing this, this the schedule or the, the calendar date, uh, substantively. It doesn't, that doesn't seem prudent, a prudent way to, to, to address budgetary concerns. So basically, it seems, seems like it was ignored, uh, out of budgetary, uh, necessity rather than addressed. And I think all this board would, would ask for is that those things be addressed ahead of time, uh, instead of just, uh, it, it sort of described away after the fact.
It, it wasn't ignored. It, it was a discussion point at the beginning of when we were reviewing their roll-up document. And based on their original schedule that was submitted as part of the GMP, this work was to start three to four weeks before where it's at now. So, um, we're, we're monitoring it, and all I can say is, you know, we're, we're on track to, to make up the time. But as it relates to the costs for this winter cost protection, um, we, we have an allowance that they've, they've put together based on their discussions with their subcontractors, and we're monitoring it weekly. So that, that's all I can give to you at this time, but it was not ignored.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, just sort of continuing on the subject of risk management and such, is there any sort of discussion of, um, like, I guess sourcing of our equipment and FFNE? Um, you know, I don't know if we're gonna have tariffs, but if we wanna buy those things before, if they're coming from abroad. I don't know, that's something we've thought about, but, um, something that's twenty-five percent more expensive and comes from South Korea or something, might be just worth checking out.
Very valid point. I think that's something to work with, uh, Eric and Margaret on as we move forward. But, um, a lot of the, um, items of the FFNE allowance, uh, was already taken under control under, uh, Eric's team. And so, um, those monies that we originally set aside have been applied to, um, other applications within the, the consultant, um, services.
Alright. Our owner's rep, before we dive back into the budget revenues and expenditures.
I just have one more. Um, on the milestone schedule in the future, is it, is it possible to give us like, some, some milestones other than construction completion and past dates?
Sure. Yeah, we just, and I apologize for interrupting you. We literally just got the updated CPM from the contractor last week. So my goal is to, to land those in there, so you'll have a more definitive timelines of certain, um, efforts. And so it won't just be broad like what you're seeing there. So, um, thank you for bringing that up, but that will be in the next report.
Thank you.
Okay. Eric, I think maybe we're back to you for a, walk us through this spreadsheet.
Okay, great. So, um, yeah, sorry, that wasn't included. So I just kinda color-coded the revenues, um, and the expenditures to kind of where, where that money's coming from. So, um, you know, so the, the amount that comes from the bond proceeds, the general fund reserve allocation, and the rec sales and use tax, uh, tax reserve allocations are in the blue up top there with that middle column being the totals of those, just so we can kind of see where those totals came from. And then the orange is the, um, grant funding and also the, uh, capital campaign funding. And that is totaled there. Um, then we also have the bond proceeds and interest income, um, to come up with a total to date, uh, you know, as far as revenue for the project. And I wanna make sure you understand, this is utilizing that seven-hundred-thousand rec sales and use tax, um, allocation that, that was our contingency on the contingency. So we're at twelve, uh, twelve million, nine-hundred-and-forty-eight, two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand. So, so that, that number, after, when I put all that together, is what I was looking at and, and, you know, feeling okay about when I started looking at the expenditures. Cuz we, we haven't done this exercise yet with this project. And, and we're at a point where, yeah, we can, we can actually, these are some real numbers, right? So, um, and remember, this is if we don't raise any more money in our capital campaign. And we have two, two additional grants that we're gonna be going after, um, in February and March of this year. And so, you know, that's not included in here. And from this point on, you know, any, any, uh, any revenue that we receive through our capital campaign is not included in, in that number.
But that does include the ones that Cynthia just updated as, as large donations, okay?
Yeah, and that's show, and that's shown, um, in the capital campaign, you know, and there's a five-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-four um, was our capital campaign to-date revenue.
And then what's right under that in handwriting on our copy, six-fifty-two?
Oh, I know, sorry, you got my hand notes. Um, so that is, that is what, um, we, we feel is in the works right now. And so, not, not in hand, but in the works.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, which, which would bring us up to almost one-point-five, um, but, but that's not in hand, so.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, those are my notes.
Six-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand on top of the five-thirty-seven, or six-fifty-two total?
Yeah, six-fifty-two with some additional, um, uh, donations to, on top of this five-thirty-seven.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, not, not at.
So that would replace the five-thirty-seven?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Thank you. Um, and then we, we got into the expenditure side and looking all the way back to bond closing costs, looking at the, um, contract for the design and engineering. Um, and that, that has been updated for some additional services, so that is to-date also. Um, and then we looked at A.D. Miller construction costs. So that's, that's been, uh, the AIA contract with the pre-con services and then the two amendments to the, to the original contract, come up with that guaranteed maximum price. Then we looked at, um, owner's fees, commissioning, and Wember fees. And then some of, these are some of the owner's, um, responsibilities, so FFNE and signs, permit and fees, um, capital campaign expenditures, uh, owner contingency for the design and soft costs, and then owner contingency for the construction. So that's what makes up that, that, uh, allocation totals there, um, for our, our, our responsibility. Um, so the total to date there was twelve million, eight-hundred-and-fifty-two, eight-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand. So that gave us a kind of utilizing that seven-hundred-thousand out, out of the rec sales news tax, actually a surplus in the budget, uh, at, at today's date. And so if you, on the backside, you have, um, all the add alternates. So none, none of those numbers included our add alternates. And so the add alternates, I listed these in order of priority for critical path construction scheduling. And so, so, so this is, this is like, you know, some of the decisions that, that we're bringing to you here is, is, you know, look at where our budget is, look at, um, the importance of making some decisions now and in the very short future here on some of these additional expenditures as add-alts, to make our project whole. And so on the, the bottom there, that overrun and add altern, add alternates, you know, fee is what we're, what we're minus right now with that ninety-five, you know, surplus on the other side. Where, um, so the total add alternates were at six-fifty-eight. And then, you know, subtracting that ninety-five, we have in surplus right now, if we utilize that seven-hundred-thousand, we have five-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand and eighty-nine dollars in, in add alternates to, to complete the project, to, to build it as, as designed. What's, no, what's not included in here is some change order stuff that's gonna happen with the project, of course. Um, but I just wanna make you aware of that, so.
And those change orders should be covered with our contingency, I would think.
Yes, yep, you, I mean, we.
Got three-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand.
Yep, and so that would, that would, you know, that's why it's there, right, to, to cover that. Um, we, you know, obviously, if we spend all the contingency, you know, then we're, we have another conversation. But, um, but that's, that's where we are, um, with the budget, without some change orders that we're working on.
And just to be clear, I mean, having a guaranteed maximum price should prevent us from having to have another conversation. Because, no. Okay.
Yeah.
Like, what's a scenario in which something would exceed the GMP and not fall within the responsibility of the contract? I just don't know.
Um, unforeseen conditions, change in schedule, delays, weather conditions. It, they can, there's a lot of things that A.D. Miller can put into unforeseen conditions.
I see, okay.
And, and also if we make a change in the design or something too. I mean, that could be part of, one of our, our, our choices too, you know?
Okay.
So.
Okay, so clarifying questions about where we are? Looks like we're in very good shape for the current scope, and then with the add-alts, there's five-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand dollars in additional, you know, needs.
Um, and, and I, I wanna end the conversation with the kind of the deep dive we've done the last couple of days on the rec sales and use tax, uh, fund balance too. So we'll end it with that, but I want, I want, uh, Andy and Taylor to kind of explain, uh, you know, some changes that were made through our value engineering on the project. Um, you know, I, I really feel like that they were, um, logical, um, changes, uh, for the project. It did not affect the, the integrity of the project at all, and, and I want them to kind of walk us through that, so.
Can I just ask a question before we get into VE?
Yeah.
Is the VE that we're talking about right now, that's already the VE that was included in the previous budget?
Yeah.
It's not coming off of this number?
No, and, and you hadn't seen the changes, so we really wanted to bring back what those changes actually look like.
Sure.
You hadn't seen any of that, so.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, I think, Taylor.
I am not able to share for some reason. I was gonna try to share this presentation, but it's not.
They, they just changed it so you can.
Oh. Cool. Okay, can you guys see my screen?
Yep.
Um, yeah, so as Eric mentioned, um, a few changes happened. And, um, we submitted those as changes for town to review, and they sort of took a look and were like, this changes Main Street enough that we should just sort of bring this back to you guys, let you see sort of specifically what changed about the masonry as part of the value engineering. And then also what the sort of new street tree selections look like against the building, because that really changes the streetscape. Um, so those are kind of the, the primary design changes that we're gonna focus on with this presentation. Um, this is just a general update, which most of this, we've already sort of run through. Um, the last time we saw you guys, you approved the hundred percent GMP. Um, that included the value engineering proposal numbers, but not necessarily the visuals, right? Um, anticipated completion per construction is still fall of twenty-twenty-five. Um, value engineering included masonry, there were a few windows and some material finishes. The high priority design alternates, which Eric has already sort of expanded on, um, still include the trellis and the PV array, um, the flocculation system on the, um, pool pumps, and then the aquatic play elements. And, um, generally, the design update, again, is masonry and landscaping. So, um, with that, uh, we have an updated planting plan, and this, really, the only thing that changed on this planting plan is along Main Street. So we submitted this as part of the change order, um, to the permit, and it includes this, um, pine tree change as well as the, um, elm tree on the corner of Seventh Change. Um, so those are new species that connect one design, the landscape architect worked with the town arborist to select. And we've, um, incorporated those into some renderings for you guys to look at. This is just a really quick. This is just a really quick diagram on where the um, brick facade has sort of shrunk to. So originally it was, was the entire Main Street wall and effectively we'd sort of shrunk it to two thirds of the Main Street wall. Uh, but it does still wrap the corner and um, is the complete uh, west length of the west wall. Um, okay. So then before and after, the top left corner is what we brought to you guys last time. Um, you can kind of see the vertical stripes of the glass and brick and how that alternates all the way down. It goes the full height of the wall. And in the value engineering proposal, effectively that sort of facade has um, shrunk down. So it's become shorter. It falls now below the trellis, you can see on this um, view over here. And then effectively it stops right at that sort of two thirds mark. Um, and these are just a couple of different shots. You can see the updated street trees. Um, we have a sort of at time of planting scale and a mature scale, because those are gonna look different. Um, it's gonna take a few years for those trees to really get bigger. But you can kind of see the, the difference between, you know, what the original pine tree, the scale of that tree was um, in comparison to a, sort of a, a more desirable street tree. Um. Generally, the patterning and the brick and the glass, we really retained that sort of essence, right? Like the original goal of the, the screen um, for daylighting and night lighting concepts and um, sort of that quilting idea, right? Is still really intact. It's just scaled down and really it's actually kind of solved a few other things. We were having issues with like that wall feeling really massive and expansive and in reducing the scale of the facade. Um, the brick facade, it really sort of creates this nice like datum at fourteen feet, foot height. Um, which speaks to the rest of historical Carbondale brick. Um, we're still including that historical um, kind of nod with the brick selection. Those like specifications have not changed. Um, so really it's, it's just a change of, of where we're placing the facade. And then um, we have a couple more slides of this. So this was just a little bit of our original patterning, which I think we've shared with you guys, but the daylighting and the nighttime um, kind of glow concepts. Um, this is sort of a square view. So you get the whole, like, this is the ticket entry corner. The bus bench, the new trees and the facade where it sort of stops here. Nighttime facade. We did a couple without the trellis. So as we noted, the trellis is still technically an add alternate. Um, so there's a couple of views that just sort of give you the character of that corner without it. It's, it's pretty different. Um, just general sort of collage of the palette, right? Which is unchanged um, samples of the frosted glass block that will be the windows behind in the locker rooms. Um, and then uh, this is sort of the, the um, trellis canopy. It's a cowl panel that's translucent. And then a little bit of the like brick glass um, combination. And then just, just kind of quick reference, the wall assembly, um, which I think we, we brought to you guys before, but.
No, they haven't seen.
I haven't seen this. Okay. Um, so just quick reference, um, this is interior, this is exterior. This is like if you cut through the wall and you were looking at it sort of sideways. Um, this is the eight by eight glass block that you can see from inside the space. And then this is the brick and glass that sort of weave together this layer here. Um, and then this is obviously just a wider cavity where we have those window zones. Um, but this is how the light sort of moves um, through the wall. That's all we got. Does have any questions?
Um, can you just explain that, that nighttime lighting piece, like how that, that works and the effect there? Cause.
Yeah.
One.
Hang on. Let's see. Um. Think I can doodle on this. Okay, so there is a light strip that's incorporated in the top of the wall. Um, there's a piece of flashing that has um, basically an L E D in it that points down. And that will cast uh, light down through that cavity in between. There's an air gap, basically. The air gap between the C M U and the brick um, is where that light casts down. So we think at night it'll have some kind of um, glow.
And we have a manner of changing those lights in twenty five years or whatever when they.
Yeah.
Die. Okay.
Yep.
Have, have, have you done any? Um, we think it will glow versus we, we, we've done a test and know that L, those L E Ds at that spec will go thirteen feet. To the bottom are two different things. Are, are we like, that seems like if this is our, this is the marquee thing that we're creating here. Um, I think it's really important that we know that that's viable. And we don't end up with just one, one glowing strip across. I mean, you know, for inverse squares, how light works and all sorts of crazy stuff. But we need to make sure that that's gonna happen. Yes.
So on a project where we do not actually have a lot of lighting designer, we um, Land and Shelter took our detail to a lighting designer that we work with often. And had it reviewed and had some feedback that they um, they made a, a little change to the detail. And we end up changed to the, we're, we're actually painting the C M U block white.
Right. Okay. That makes, that makes sense. Yeah.
In order to cast the light further down. So like a little bit of a speck on the paint. And I don't know if this will satisfy you, but that lighting designer who's Aaron Humphries said, um, we, I believe that that L E D strip is gonna cast to your full fourteen feet. And you're gonna get a, a feeling of glow through there. I, I think there's a, like, it's definitely gonna create a cool effect. The hundred percent accuracy of the renderings, I'm not gonna speak to.
Right. Fair enough.
Did some diligence on that point is my point.
I just have a question on the, on the site plan here. Uh, is that a like, and I guess I'm just curious. Uh, sort of in the realm of this hot tub and the, is that an electrical transformer? To the, I guess I'm just, again, very sensitive about the trees and impinging further on that columnar oak there. And I guess just wanna make it assurance that we have given that s- tree enough space that we're not gonna run into the same situation with. Oh, in order to get the pipe to the hot tub, we have to kill this tree now too. Or charge you another twenty, two hundred thousand dollars or.
It's a good question.
Yeah, we, we were, um, we had a lot of conversation around the tree. Um, and Connect One did feel confident that putting um, sort of um, flatwork in that zone was acceptable. All of the underground conduit that would actually be trenched is further away from the drip line.
Well, I just wanted to make, make a plain note that I care about that.
I, I, like, we had a lot of conversations around all of these trees, Chris. Like I should, like, you know, I don't.
It sounds like the Forest Service sort of get us in again on the other.
But it's not like it wasn't discussed. Like, all of this stuff has been a bit crazy for us.
Well, great. I'm glad it's been discussed.
No, no, I mean, I just, I don't think, I think we need to be vigilant about these things. If there's a lesson learned from the past couple of months, it's that it's not set in stone. That worries me.
Well, I speak. While, while we're, while we're looking at the landscaping plan, it, I'm, well. I'm assuming the ship has sailed. Is there any discussion whatsoever about having even a three foot path? So that we can get to our favorite town big signature park from our Main Street. There is such a lost opportunity here. It makes me so sad that, that we never discussed. Having a way to access Sopris from Main Street. And let alone, let it be a great, wonderful, you know, welcoming approach. It seems like we've just decided we are going to play it up to, you know, up to the border with the, the Forest Service and let them, you know, not shake hands with them or do anything. And meanwhile, you know, we've, we've seemed to bend over backwards to accommodate, sort of accommodate them and, and not ask for, for anything um, eh, from them. Um, and, and still, still we have, you know, basically we've, we've created more between this Forest Service and our, and the pool. We've, we've created more of a impediment to getting to Sopris Park. Um, there is no entrance per se and, and we sort of fall off our sidewalks into it. And, and I'm just wondering whether there's any, even if it's an informal way that we kind of preserve that a little bit.
So that gate has gone.
I, I don't, the Forest Service at some point said that they'd, they'd consider keeping, you know, basically not walling it off. Um, but, you know, it's, it's a major change and a major opportunity. I, if there's any way we can consider dumping some gravel and, and preserving that right of way in this plan and not planting, at least not planting over it. Um, I, I, I would really strongly hope we could do that. Having some entrance to this park from Main Street just seems logical, even if it's a kind of a funky back, you know, you gotta know where to go to go, but.
That's kind of how it is now, right? Like, you mean like the little cutoff?
Sort of. But you, and you walk through a parking lot. I mean, I think we, we have an opportunity here to, to walk over some gravel, have a path, you know, that goes from Main Street, which would be cool. Um, and how, how that didn't happen, why we didn't, why we refused to get in the same room and, and talk about our desires. Um, I, you know, I, I'm, I'll stop, but it's, it, it just seems like a major lost opportunity. And I, I've.
I, is it totally, I'm not sure if all is lost in terms of like having at least a connection.
That's, I guess that's my, that's my question. That's my question. Can, what? Can, can, can we do anything there to consider?
It would require like these five bushes or whatever you're saying in this upper corner.
Yeah. Well, and, and probably a discussion with the Forest Service as to what they plan to do.
Well, they have a parking lot.
Yeah.
Built there almost, so.
Any response from the team? I'm not sure what we're talking about actually, where you would go from Main Street without being within the fenced confines of the pool property, how you would get.
Well, I guess, I mean, I have, have.
To ride.
Our, our fence is on the property line. Is that, that's the decision that we, that's the design decision that we've made?
Yeah.
Okay. Then.
The site was really tight um, east to west. And it was, we went back and forth a lot about how close the building should be to the property line and where the fence should be. And that corner um, on the east end there is meant to be sort of the emergency egress or access for the ambulance to the pool deck.
Right.
That kind of fifteen foot dimension is really like pretty critical in terms of being able to get into the fenced zone. And then from a safety perspective, obviously, like the whole pool deck has to be fenced, right? So it just, it got pretty tight over there on that, that side um, when we were looking at uh, building placement and fence location.
Okay.
We did a gate and access, you know, um, on that uh, you know, southeast corner into the pool itself. Um, and we've utilized that for many different reasons for, you know, taking out uh, and bringing in um, you know, pool covers for winter. Um, we've used it during Mountain Fair um, as an access point to the pool from the park. Um, so that, that, that's why we left that, that gate in there. So.
Okay. Any other questions about the design? Sounds like we're ready for final information then. And, and thank you, um, Andy and the whole um, design team for these updated renderings. It's really helpful to see the reduced scope of the brick facade, but what in my opinion was done very thoughtfully. And I don't think anybody's gonna miss what would have been above the um, trellis there. Um, if we can find a way to get the trellis. Um, and it's good to see it with and without and really understand what it might look like. So thank you for all the preparation that went into showing us that. Jess?
Are we, this is it? Like, well, there's no conversation about? All the brick? Uh, like, that's it? We've decided that this is, this is the glass block because we have to value engineer it out?
I, I would, I, I, I would offer that I, I like, I, I'm, I'm curious about how we've gone from, from sort of a, like, a very big change in my, my opinion. From, from kind of a mosaic kind of look that kind of organically filtered out to like, hey, this is, this is, this is where we're putting our glass brick. And I under, I understand the, the concept of, of kind of delineating that thirteen foot. Because it referenced, that thirteen foot height, because it, it references the rest of the, the, the downtown. Um, I'd be more happy with a, a front door on Main Street. But, but I think what I was really interested, what really loved about the, the glass brick is that it, it really was an opportunity for something very artistic. And now I feel like, and, and you brought up the, the path, the, the quilt aspect, and it does look like sort of a patterned quilt instead of sort of a real. I don't, to me, I, 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 I think there was an opportunity, the, the path we were going down before, even if it was less uh, dense glass brick in the same spot. It looks like we, what we've done is sort of taken the same amount of brick and put it in a smaller spot almost. Um, and maybe, I may be wrong, but it looks like eh, we've just kind of chopped it off instead of letting things sort of organically. Go. And, and I may, I imagine there've been lots of, lots of studies as to what that looks like and, and, and the logic behind it. But I'd, I'd be, I'd be curious to hear that. This is, this is, this is the change and. We'd love to hear from it.
Well, one of the things that I like about it actually is the um, the C M, it used to have this like front and back that looked like they were like two different buildings. So I, I like the exposure of the C M U around the front and showing the like layers of the construction of the building. That it, it breaks up the facade on Main Street by having that band at the top and on the left of that exposed C M U. And then the piece that's now kind of like the sweater of the masonry that goes on top. Has a slightly higher concentration of glass, not, you know, it's not radical, but we sort of bumped it up. And I think it organized the facade in a way that I actually kind of like, you know, like there's this. C M U back sort of, you know, ground, right? With the front being this lively glass piece around the corner. I prefer it. Um, but the, the way that we had it before, it had these, the, the pattern sort of roughly broke into these vertical bands. And that was originally designed with a building that had a, like a sixteen foot top of wall. And it gradually crept up because of the size of these heat pumps that were on the roof. And then the isolation coils that had to go under the heat pumps. And it be, it got to the point where I was like, I'm sort of uncomfortable with our plain brick facade being unbroken at the height that it ended up being, which is a little over seventeen feet. And that, having that horizontal band really break it does something positive in my mind. Um, so I think that, like, there being a kind of like figure ground of this like background and a thing in front does something, does, does something positive. Um, not that I didn't like the design before, but like I'm, I'm arguing that I'm cool with this, you know, like I, I think it's doing something good.
That's helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's about a hundred percent where I actually just agree with you aesthetically as well. I think having the, yeah, having this sort of truth of the building just be coming around and then having that feel like more of an art piece. And I think the, I also like the upping the, the glass component of it. I think the quilting pattern reads better in the, in the nighttime against a more illuminated wall instead of where it's fading into the. So I, I've, I've have the opposite opinion that I think it's gotten better and cheaper. So.
Good.
I, I really wanted the architect to say, I'm good with this because that matters to me and I, I'm fine with it. Thank you for saying you're cool with it.
I, I will say, having been the like fiscal antagonist on this project a lot of the way, I will flip the other side and say, it, I think it's absolutely critical. We build the trellis. I just think the building needs that.
Let's move into that part of the discussion then, because I think Eric has wanted to update us on fund balance. Um, and then next meeting is where we'll actually make the decision. So we're getting all the information now, um, where we are with adults. And I think that's a great segue. So um, can you finish that story for? can you finish that story for us, please, Eric?
Yes, you, you bet. So, um, so Greg and Lauren and I, you know, I've done kind of a deep dive into that. Uh, rec sales and use tax balance and, and it's, it's good news. Um, Lauren, do you wanna kind of talk about, you know, where you feel like we are and, and, you know, and just where, where we think we could go and add some more money to this project, looking at some of these AdAlts out of the rec sales and use tax balance. Um, you know, without putting any risk to that, that, that fund at all. Um, Lauren, do you wanna?
Happy to, um, you know, and I talked to Ben about this a little bit this morning in our meeting. You know, we were talking about this, this fabulous news about fundraising and what's going on right now and how there are some real opportunities for, um, a, a couple maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars more than we have now in donations between now and the end of the year. Um, if not much more than that, because one of these individuals was actually talking about the, the potential of, of a lot more. So we were trying to do the balance of worst case scenario, right now, we've planned to take seven hundred thousand dollars from the rec sales and use tax fund balance and pad the project to get it over the finish line, um, assuming that we didn't collect a dime more. Um, well, now we've collected more than a dime more, um, and we have some promising things coming up. So, um, we did a little bit of mathematical exercise just saying, okay, so worst case scenario at this point, if we take the seven hundred thousand dollars out of the rec sales and use tax fund, what's the fund balance percentage that's left in there? Um, and then if we wanted to go forward with particularly the most high priority ad alternates that need to either be plumbed or, um, or like the trellis and the solar, um, and take advantage of some things like the IRS, the federal direct pay program to get rebates on some of those things. And we, let's say we were to take another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the rec sales and use fund, where is, where is that balance? Um, as most of you know, our fund balance policy on the rec sales and use tax fund is slightly higher. Um, keep a slightly higher percentage balance because it's a smaller amount of money and there are a lot of unknowns right now. Uh, particularly because we're not operating the new pool and we don't have the data on what those actual operating costs are gonna be or staffing costs or what have you. So I went to finance and at this moment, if we took seven hundred thousand dollars from the rec sales and use tax fund, which is our sort of bottom line backup plan contingency, we're still left with a fund balance percentage of two hundred and eighty six percent in the rec sales and use tax fund. And our.
What's that, what's that as a dollar amount? Sorry to interrupt.
Uh, it's almost four million dollars. So four million dollars over the eighty percent. That's four million dollar surplus. If we took another, I think the number that we were talking about this morning, Ben, was two hundred and sixty three thousand or something like that. Um, we'd only go down to two hundred and thirty six percent and we'd still have three million dollars to play with for emergencies and unknown operating costs and things like that. So with regard to that fund, going forward with some of the, um, uh, higher priority and less easy to do later, um, ad alternates is not really a risk for the town. And if we collect what I think we're gonna collect in fundraising, um, we probably won't need it anyway. We won't need to use it. Um, not for the services anyway.
So at our next meeting, we'll be asked to decide what to move forward with, with AdAlts so that they can get that on the lead times and ordering and all that. And, um, I think Lauren, it would just help us if we have that all in writing, current fund balance and I'd say is with the seven hundred thousand dollars already subtracted out of it, because we've already committed that to the project. So I don't want to be looking at that as like unspent funds. I think we should consider that to be spent funds. And then we can make a decision how far down the list of AdAlts to go. And then we hope that fundraising covers some of that and that contingency covers some of that. And maybe we don't go that deep, but it sounds like we could easily make the decision to build the full project, um, without going back to the general fund, which was a big priority, I think, for a lot of the board the last time that we talked about it. So what other questions do we have now that we need staff to bring back more information on next meeting so that we can maybe wrap up for tonight and then we're gonna decide next time?
So just to clarify, according to this sheet, one point six from general fund reserves has already been transferred.
Right, yeah. And I think last time we discussed it, you and some other board members, Colin, didn't want to go any deeper than that into the general fund. So that's why we're looking at anything else being from the rec sales and use tax fund.
Well, I, I'll just add that last year when we were in budget discussions, I suggested that we take all of the money of the reserve funds for the, um, rec fund. Because we cannot spend rec funds on anything but recreation. We're talking about crossings, roundabout, affordable housing. We can't use rec fund money for that. So if there is four million dollars in the rec fund balance or reserves, we should be using all of that first and not the general fund. If we need to backfill the rec program for when the pool opens and everything, happy to do it. But at this point, if they're holding all that money and then we're gonna move money that we need for affordable housing and crossings, I think that's, that's the wrong move. I mean, why would we do that? Uh, I mean, I don't want to bankrupt that fund, but we can only use rec funds for rec projects. This is a rec project.
And we, but we've already moved to the one point six. Now that it's in that fund, it probably can't go back.
Why not? It's our money. It's all the same. It's the town, right? We just have different.
Is there any, is there any legal reason why we can't move the one point six back?
If you're asking me, I, I'd want to check with the auditors about that, but I think that prior to the year end, I think it's probably due.
Cause that was in this year's budget. That was a twenty twenty four item that we voted on and approved a year ago.
But I had asked staff, let's look at the possibility of using just the reserve from rec to fund this project so we can save our general fund for projects that the rec funds can't go towards. So I'm just really, I, I can't emphasize this point enough. We cannot use rec funds for anything other than rec. Why would we use general fund money for a rec project if there's money in the rec fund? More than we thought. In October, the board memo said there was two point seven of a fund balance. Now we're up to four. We've got the money in the rec program to do what we want to do without jeopardizing other projects that we can only use general fund reserves on.
Is, does the rest of the board want to analyze that further at the next meeting, looking at, um, you know, attempting to backfill what was budgeted from the general fund this year with rec fund?
I'm in full support of using the rec funds for this rec project and backfilling it if we need to from general fund, including that one point six, which is what I thought. Now forgive me, I was in Italy and trying to catch a flight while I was listening to this conversation, but that's what I thought the direction was at that meeting.
That was, that's the seven hundred from.
No, I thought that there was a conversation that the one point six could come from rec too.
That was budgeted a year ago, like before the current.
So, but Colin asked if we could move it back. So I just I would really like to explore whether or not we can move that back and use the rec funds.
Great. So that sounds like information we need at the next meeting.
Yeah, so what, so we'll need to just do, uh, dive into that rec sales and use tax fund surplus and you, and, and run those scenarios, right? And, and see where that puts us. Um, and there is that one in that variable of that equation. The one thing that we don't know, the one variable we do not know right now is the operational costs of, of, and of the, of the aquatics facility, right, of the aquatic center. And we also don't know, you know, what level of, uh, of cost recovery we have too there to really, to really do a you know, those are the two variables we don't know with that process. Everybody knows that, that, that's why we want to keep some reserves and keep that fund healthy. But I think we've all talked about that. Everybody knows that.
And we have reserves that we could put into your reserves if we need to.
I will do, well, we'll do a deep dive on that, but I also don't want to forget about Chacos Park and matching funds for grants.
Which we, which we can do out of the general fund.
Okay, I think we need the information. We can look at it next meeting and it sounds like, um, at least part of the board is interested in doing as much as we can of this from the, um, sales and use, the recreation fund. Even if that includes, you know, undoing the transfer that was done this year. So we can look at that. We can see what's possible. Anything else anybody needs for next time to be able to make a decision? Do you need information, any more info on these ad alternates next time in addition to what we got tonight?
I just want to make sure that waiting until next week on these adults is still okay with lead times. You're good if we give you a decision next.
Yeah, they, they gave us January one, but we don't have a, yeah, it has to be next week because there's no meeting before that, so.
Perfect. Quick question, did the contractor do, I'm sorry, did the, did the contractor do, um, offer, did we come to some agreement about, uh, compensation for the removal of the elm that was not supposed to go? Yeah, we. How, how was that resolved or still quickly?
Yeah, so we're, um, definitely, um, you know, they're not going to be charging us for the removal of um, the trees that were in the front and the replanting of those trees. And then they will be paying for the, the replacement tree of the one that they took down.
Okay, as long as, as long as we, I guess, push for as big a healthy tree as we can possibly get because you can't. You know, and I, I do appreciate putting in sort of existing tree and ten years out tree in the, in the rendering. Thank you for that. Um, but yeah, just let's make sure that we don't sell ourselves short on that.
Okay. Thanks, everybody, for lots more information and one more big update. We'll look forward to making a decision next week.